All right, good evening, everyone. I think we're all just about here. Okay, why don't we go ahead and begin? It is 7:01, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the San Berno City Council meeting of May the 25th, 2021, and we will call this meeting to order. May we please have roll call?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Yeah.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. I've realized that I've asked my colleagues to lead the pledge at one point or another, and I will go ahead and lead it this time. Also to acknowledge since Monday is Memorial Day, and unfortunately at the cemetery, they're not having any public activity, but just on Memorial Day, we remember the veterans who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. These brave men and women have dedicated their lives to honor the living and make our lives better. Memorial Day, we remember the veterans who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. So with that, I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. So now we'll move on to item number three, public comments for items not on the agenda. So if it's an item that's not on the current agenda, then this would be the opportunity in which to discuss. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. And if we have folks, that would be the, please raise your virtual hand, and then we will start to begin and have the city clerk call in any folks. Go ahead, city clerk.
I currently see no hands raised, but while we give a moment, I just want to say for anybody who is calling in by phone, if you would like to raise your hand, you can press star nine on your phone, and it will raise your virtual hand for us to see. I am still seeing no hands raised. Mayor.
Thank you, city clerk. Okay, we'll move on to item number four, announcements and presentations. First item on the agenda is item A, be issuing a proclamation recognizing June 2021 as Pride Month in San Bruno. I'd like to bring in, he is on the Samatéo County LGBTQ Commission for the county of Samatéo. Steve Dusor, if you would come on in, and I will read, I won't read everywhere ases. I'd rather hear from Steve rather than myself, but let me just read some portions of it, please. Whereas this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite dignity and worth, and San Bruno calls upon the people of this municipality to embrace this principle and work to eliminate prejudice wherever it exists. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for the Samatéo County's LGBTQ community, and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. Now therefore be it resolved that I Rico Medina hereby proclaim the month of June 2021 as Pride Month in support of the LGBT community. And I would like to, and I know it's virtual at this point, but Steve, if I could, please turn it over to you.
Good evening. Thank you. What an honor to be amongst you tonight. Thank you so much for your support of me as a resident of our community, and I'll make some more formal comments, but personally, many of you I know, and I appreciate you so much. I also appreciate just how this city works. I got the app, the San Bruno app, and my God, you guys, boom, 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 boom. I am so impressed. Thank you, Linda, for giving me that tip. So city's working. Tax dollars are going to good use. I appreciate that so much. So I'm proud to accept the city of San Bruno's LGBTQ proclamation on behalf of the Samatéo County LGBTQ Commission. Our commission's purpose is to bring greater recognition and visibility to the LGBTQ community in Samatéo County. Over the past several months, our commission has invited all cities and towns in Samatéo County to formally recognize Pride Month. This visibility allows LGBTQ residents to know that they are seen and that they are important. By issuing this proclamation, the city of San Bruno is visibly demonstrating how important it is for the LGBTQ youth, seniors, and those struggling with coming out to see their local government celebrate Pride Month. June is an extremely important month for the LGBTQ plus community. June marks the 51st anniversary of foundational pride celebrations. It also is the sixth anniversary of the Supreme Court decision that legalized same-sex marriage. Although Pride Month is normally a time of unapologetically celebrating one's identity and boldly declaring love is love, this year, the LGBTQ community recognizes that it is more important than ever to be an ally to the African-American and AAPI communities. Pride celebrations actually have deep roots with protests and riots. The Compton Cafeteria riots occurred in August of 1966, marking the beginning of transgender activism in San Francisco. This event was one of the first LGBTQ plus-related riots in U.S. history, preceding the more famous 1969 Stonewall riots in New York City. During Stonewall, African-American people like Marsha P. Johnson and so many others were the drivers of that movement, which started to turn the tide for LGBTQ community globally. It is important for us to continue to recognize and honor the LGBTQ community, the African-American and AAPI communities, and the intersectionality that brings these communities together as we continue to fight for equality. Thank you, Mayor Medina, the City Council, and the city of San Bruno for your allyship and support. Thank you.
Stephen, thank you for your comments, and thank you for being here this evening. We very much appreciate it. And we will let you, we won't require you to stay for the whole meeting. You're welcome to, but please enjoy your evening.
All right, thank you.
Care to care. Now we'll move on to item B. There's some announcements. Announce that we are helping PG&E with their reminder to beware of scams targeting PG&E customers. Customers should stay vigilant, recognize, and avoid financial scams. PG&E will never ask for your financial information over the phone or via email, and will never demand immediate payment for any alleged past due bills. More information may be found at www.pgne, or just PGE, dot com backslash scams. And so that's just as a reminder to every, all folks, and again, if you're not sure, please pull them. Item C, announce that the COVID-19 vaccine is here, available to California ages 12 plus with parental consent. Most vaccine locations do not require an appointment. Visit www, this is a long one, www.smchealth.org, of course, you look up the vaccine clinic calendar for dates and times of local vaccine clinics, or visit myturn.ca.gov. That's myturn.ca.gov. For those not online, you can also call for vaccine information to 833-422-4255. Again, that's 833-422-4255. There's one item that is not listed, but I've asked very briefly for our fire chief, if our fire chief can be brought into the meeting, please. And basically, myself and my colleagues have gotten an email or two or inquiry in regards to the canyon. So I thought we would take this opportunity just very briefly for Chief Delay to.
Sure, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, I already delay your fire chief. Just a bit of information for the community, beginning on Monday and working through this week, we'll be doing some wildland fire training in Crestmore Canyon. It provided us a great opportunity. If everybody remembers, a few weeks ago, we noted that we were able to receive a Type 6 fire engine from Cal OES. We've used that opportunity to do some joint training with our partner agencies that all received the same type of apparatus, South San Francisco Fire Department, San Bruno, obviously, Central County Fire Department, and the Samatéo County Consolidated Fire Department. We've all been training in Crestmore Canyon throughout the week, and it's really designed to utilize and exercise these new vehicles and also get prepared for wildland season here, and it's a great opportunity for them to know some of our geography and terrain in San Bruno and get them more familiar with it in case we did have an event. So if there's any questions, be more than happy to answer anything for you.
Okay, with that, thank you, chief, and just we want to take the opportunity for those watching or can pass on information to the community. So thank you, Chief Delay. And with that, that concludes our announcements and presentations. We're going to move on to consent calendar. That's item five. All items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. So at this time, are there any items that we want to pull for a complete staff report and separate vote? Councilmember Mason? Muted.
Sorry, not for separate vote. Oh, wait a minute.
No worries. I'm not seeing any. So are there items that we would like to either have a question, maybe a follow-up detail from staff? Mr. Hamilton? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I saw this. Councilmember Mason, you'd said.
Yeah, I think if we, I just have some follow-up questions, I think, for F and G. Then one second, just looking at this last, and that's it. That's it. I think the other questions have been answered. Thank you.
F and G, thank you. Anybody else from council? Not seeing any. Then we have two items.
Sorry, Mayor, apologize.
Vice Mayor.
That would be item G. A quick comment on item H. And item D.
Okay. Thank you, seeing no others. I'm going to start at the top and we'll work our way down, if that's okay. So we'll start with item F. As in Frank, appoint Rico and Michael to the City Council Subcommittee or Ad-Hoc Committee to review fireworks and permit applications in preparation for the sale of, and saying fireworks in San Bruno. And again, it is supposed to say "and" the process. Councilmember Mason?
Councilmember Mason, you're muted.
I'm sorry, thank you. So in reading through the staff report and the attachments, I guess I just have a question around the review by the Ad-Hoc Committee. I'm fine with the Ad-Hoc Committee, but I think my question is more around the process and what the Ad-Hoc Committee actually reviews. So based on the question that I asked of staff and the response I got, it would be good to better understand or better, or give more opportunities for others to actually have a stand. So for those members of the public, there was a question that was sent earlier around who was noticed of the opportunity to have a fireworks stand. Nine groups are grandfathered in, and then nine groups are eligible to have an additional stand. And the noticing from the answer that the council received is that they, noticing of the opportunity for these stands only went to those who had stands the previous year. And so I do just want to ask how, and maybe this is a question for the city attorney, but how can we ensure that the noticing is more public? It would be great to give this opportunity to the PTAs, for example, if they're offered or they have the ability to within their own rules and regulations. Maybe the Parkside, Parkside has a number of different organizations that are made up of parents. These could really help our public schools in San Bruno. The Education Foundation may be interested. I have not spoken with any of them. They just came, right when I looked at the applications, I noticed that those were all missing. And I don't know what other nonprofit organizations might be in the city that might be interested in having a stand. And so without actually giving notice to anybody outside of those who applied the year before, I just think it's not fair to other organizations that may want that opportunity.
I don't know. I'm sorry, I see a competitor, I see Mark. City Attorney, I apologize. Did you have anything to say, or since I see you?
Yes, sorry, I was having trouble hiding my unmute button. You'd think after a year and a half of this, we'd know where the unmute button is, but apparently I don't. So certainly if the city council wishes to direct staff to provide additional notice, they could certainly do that. There's no legal requirement to have provided notice nor any legal prohibition why additional notice couldn't be provided.
I mean, I think the rules do say that there has to be notice. I think it just doesn't provide who the notice has to be provided to, right? So is this, is this something that we have to be agendized at a later time for next year? Since this process is already, we're already in June, or practically in June?
So I'm understanding from the city clerk, and Melissa, please feel free to speak up, that the nonprofits, and I see the city manager has his hand up as well, that staff doesn't know who's interested and who isn't. So in the past, it's been incumbent upon the nonprofits who are generally familiar with the fact that San Bruno has fireworks and you can have fireworks stands, to come to the city and request that. And we do know that has happened in the past, but apparently it may not have happened this year that there were other entities that decided to come in.
Correct. And I do want to add, I'm sorry, this is Melissa Thurman, City Clerk. I do want to add that in years past, we have had school nonprofit groups interested. Parkside did it for a couple of years and eventually pulled out. We post this notice on Channel One so that the public is, that watches our Channel One slides, is aware that they can come in and get an application if they so choose. Yes, it would be pretty hard for us to know who is interested. It would be better for anybody who knows of a nonprofit in the community that may be interested to direct them to come to the city clerk's office for an application.
Then the city manager?
Charge of Honorable City Manager. I think this is a quite simple issue. So I think what we have is a request to expand the noticing subsequently, and we can certainly do that. What I've heard this time is that the notice was posted on Channel One, as the city clerk said, as well as to all of the groups that have participated in the fireworks stands in the past. When I hear Councilmember Mason articulating, let's just broaden that. Next year, expand it out, do a more general notice that can pick up nonprofits that may not have participated in, in the process before, or nonprofits that we don't know about. And so we can certainly do that and do more of a general citywide noticing, whether it's putting it in the city manager's newsletter, posting it on social media, what have you. I think we can get the word out. So I think it's a fairly simple request to do, and so noted in staff will be directed to do that.
Great, thank you. And just because I don't know how this happened in the past since COVID was last year, as far as just inviting organizations to come and speak about their organization, it does, it says in the policy that, or the procedure that was in the staff report, that the council can request this. So again, I don't know if this needs to be agendized separately, but I'm not familiar with a couple of these groups. And I would love to hear from the groups about their organization. And it's really an opportunity to see how these funds really help their organizations. You know, because I think that these fireworks stands are huge fundraisers for some of these organizations. So same thing, I don't know if that would be something that the Ad-Hoc Committee would request, that we direct the Ad-Hoc Committee to do, or if it's been done before. I did see the notice that, it doesn't sound like it had been done in recent years. But I would love to hear from some of these organizations. I think it would just be really beneficial for the council and the public to hear about what they do and how they benefit the San Bruno community. That's it for my comments. And then if someone can provide direction on how we would make that happen, that'd be great. Thank you.
City Manager, do you have your hand up again, or was that from before?
That was a new hand raised to address Councilmember Mason's latest comment. And so my recommendation would be the Ad-Hoc Committee discusses that and a process to invite, I would say, a select group to provide a report out. One of the things that is a challenge with our business meetings, as council knows that they begin at seven o'clock. And so the more announcements and presentations we have, means the later we're getting to the business item. And given that there are 18 groups, I would suggest that the Ad-Hoc Committee just think about the process and maybe find one or two groups to highlight, or invite some representatives to meeting and, you know, keep it really short, really quick.
I'd like to expound upon that. The reason I want, I want an "and" process on there was for some of these questions, because the resolution goes back to 2008. It's also the fact of, is it necessary to have an Ad-Hoc Committee of the council review the applications which have been reviewed by the city clerk? And maybe we're just having another layer that isn't necessary or required. And so that is also, I was hoping to examine that as well. If there's not a need, then it must not duplicate efforts. And so I know Mr. Salazar has had some experience on this. Last year, the first time, I just was trying to get someone that walked through it before, and then go ahead and then bring back to council on some of those questions that have been raised. But also about the process, is, does it need the Ad-Hoc Committee? Because they have applications. My understanding is a general understanding of what, what they do, how they give back, which any council person would have the opportunity to see. So anyway, that was another one of my thoughts. Anything else from my colleagues on item F? Okay. Seeing then, we're going to move on to item G. Item G is adopt a resolution approving the final map and authorizing the city manager to execute an improvement agreement, maintenance agreement, storm water treatment measure, maintenance agreement, and affordable housing agreement for the project at 111 San Bruno Ave., Avenue, and 761, 767 Huntington Ave. And there were two colleagues. First, we'll start with Councilmember Mason, then go to Vice Mayor Medina.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, I think, for, more so for the benefit of the public. There's been so much discussion around downtown and the status of downtown. And as we know, this 111 Huntington is going to bring you right into our downtown. It would actually consider part of our downtown. So I just wanted to ask from a very, like of high level, if staff can provide a quick overview on what the maintenance agreement is and what it looks like. I was very happy to see it in the staff packet. And I think it would just be beneficial for the public to know that the city is taking measures to ensure that our landlords are taking care of their properties as they develop and after they develop.
Sure.
Let me, okay, maybe I can ask the Vice Mayor too, so that when staff answers, maybe they can incorporate everything at once, please. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions. Basically, after tonight's vote, where are we with the permitting and anticipated construction schedule? And question two is, I was able to send it into staff beforehand. And my question was, does this project exclude the residents that are living there from participating in a residential parking permit program? And it was my understanding that at the meeting, the applicant expressed no objection to, to that requirement. However, that requirement didn't make it in, to an agreement. So where, what options are we, do we have at this point? Those are my two questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. City Manager, do you have your hand up, or should I turn it over to Ms. Ritchie?
Yes, really quick through the mayor. So there are three questions. One question from Councilmember Medina about the maintenance agreement. And then two questions from Councilmember, I'm sorry, one question from Councilmember Mason about the maintenance agreement. And then two questions from Councilmember Medina, one about the permitting status and another with regard to the residential parking program. Before we answer those three questions, I want to ask our interim Public Works Director, Haylon Ritchie, to give a very brief overview of the project, because it seems like we're going to get into a little nuance about the project. And I think it's important for the, the public that's watching to have a little background on what we're talking about. With that said, Mr. Mayor, it seems like Councilmember Mason may have another question.
I'm sorry. Yeah, Councilmember Mason?
I'm sorry, just, I might as well group them in together. But when you talk about the maintenance agreement, I love that you talked about weeds and garbage. And so can you just make sure you address the timeframe that the city will be providing to the owner to actually remedy the situation? Thank you.
Ms. Ritchie?
Yes. Here in the Honorable Mayor, City Council members. My name is Haylon Ritchie, interim Public Works Director. I would like to present, share my screen. Some brief slides here. Okay. So, the title slide. Approximate location of 111 San Bruno Ave. is at the southwest corner of San Bruno Ave. West and Huntington Ave. This is a close-up view of an aerial of this location. It is outlined in red. These are some architectural renderings. Project overview. The building is five stories and contains 62 residential units, of which 11 are affordable housing, with six low-income and five moderate-income. There's approximately 7,800 square feet of ground floor commercial. Previous approvals include the transit corridors plan amendment, plan development permit, architectural review permit, vesting tentative map, two loading zone spaces on Southbound Huntington Ave. Public improvements will include new curb gutter, sidewalk, driveway ramps, pavement, water sewer storm drain improvements, streetlights, traffic signal modifications, street trees and landscaping, and irrigation developed landscaping. Before you tonight is the request to approve the final map, as well as authorize city manager to execute various agreements, including improvement, maintenance, storm water treatment measures, and affordable housing agreement. With that, I can help to answer several of the questions. So Councilmember Mason, you had asked about the maintenance agreement. What those, what that includes is, so as part of the improvement agreement, there'll be various improvements off-site. So that's within the public right of way. And those were listed as in the previous slide. So what the maintenance agreement does is ensure that the project improvements will be maintained to city standards for various facilities. And so what that is allowed for is enhanced maintenance of public improvements by the private property owner. So certain things that may have customarily been maintained by the city, such as street trees or lights, those would now be maintained by the private property owner through this maintenance agreement. And what this maintenance agreement allows is that upon noticing, and 30 days to correct the measure, that if, you know, if that were not to occur, the city could step in and, you know, well, initially provide the notice. And if that, the remedy doesn't occur, then it affords the city the ability to perform the work and seek compensation for the time and cost to perform that work. Thank you. And then regarding the status of the permits, they are, there are a few pending permits for city review, which include the shoring building encroachment permit for public improvements. The permit plans for public improvements are near complete. However, there are cool items that still require some additional coordination between the applicant and the city before the encroachment permit for the public improvements can be issued. And so there's less, you know, few remaining items to be worked through, but it is very close. I think this item type, the final map and agreements will certainly move the project forward. And I believe there are still building permits also to be obtained. And regarding the residential parking permit program, possibly if I could request the city manager or the city attorney to help assist with that question?
Sure. Through the mayor, Honorable City, City Manager, I'll address that question. So just to recap for the council and the public, the question from Councilmember Medina was, can the city prohibit the property from participating in a future residential parking program? And I believe what Councilmember Medina referenced is that in a prior meeting, there was an expressed interest or non-reluctance from the developer that they may be okay with that exclusion. Upon subsequent conversations, as this project went through the, the process to bring it here tonight, that agreement was not included in the document center before you. The council may remember that that requirement was in the Mills Park project as a developer concession as part of a development agreement. We do not have a development agreement with this project. Thus, we are not, we are not able to get that as a concession, a negotiated concession, if the developer or property owner is not willing. I did contact the developer today and confirm that they are comfortable with the documents as presented to council and not supportive at this time of excluding the project from a future residential parking program. The project is not asking for a parking concession. And staff's analysis is that we do not, based on architect standards, have the ability to exclude this project from a future residential parking program, if it is not a negotiated concession. And so while there was conversation about that, it is not in the document center before you, part of tonight.
Okay, so I, I believe the questions are answered, that there might be some follow-up to it. I also want to be able to open it up. We have somebody from the community who would like to speak on this item. Again, this is in regards to the property at 111 San Bruno Ave. and 761, 767 Huntington Ave. Again, this is in regards to the property at 111 San Bruno Avenue and 7617 Huntington Avenue. City Clerk, if you can bring in Mr. Ritchie.
Yes, Moshe Dinar. I'm trying to bring you in, Mr. Dinar. It's not, just one moment, I'm getting an error here. I'm trying to get you unmuted. I'm having some trouble here. If you're able to unmute yourself, will you please hit the unmute button?
Yeah.
There you are. Okay. We can hear you whenever you're ready.
I'm ready now.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Moshe Dinar. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak at your meeting. I'm the architect for the project. I've been working with planning, public works, and the whole city staff on this project for six and a half years. We are reaching an important milestone in our process in the sense that with the approval of these agreements and the approval of the final map, we will be able to obtain a permit to do the off-site improvements and make improvements to the city's utilities along the street and then start the construction of our building. So we're very happy. We're very excited. We want to thank you for the time that you've spent listening to us in various presentations and various neighborhood meetings. Thank you again. As far as the parking is concerned, I'd like to say that the amount of space available for parking is extremely limited. We are, we have a very, very expensive parking system. It is three-high. It goes down on the ground and comes back up. It requires the availability of a credit card type thing for each resident to operate. And I think that we have enough to satisfy all our residents. So I don't know about possibly participating in other programs if it's possible. Certainly, the owner may consider it, but I don't think we have enough to park people outside the building and their guests. Other than that, I feel that we have a great building and we're looking forward to its construction in the city of San Bruno. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. If there's anybody else who wishes to speak on this item, if you could raise your hand now. I see one more speaker, and this will be the last speaker. I'm not seeing any other hands come up, but City Clerk, if you could bring in our next speaker.
Hi, yes, just one moment. The next speaker is Stephen Seymour.
Hello.
Hi, Stephen. Are you ready?
All right. I just wanted to, it's exciting that this project is moving forward. The property's been vacant for so long. It'd be nice to have neighbors there. I do want to express my concern that the property is going to be able to or is not taken out of what might be a residential parking permit program in and around the area. And my biggest concern there, well, two, I have one. I mean, first one is the owner expressed in a meeting when Councilmember Medina asked if they would be willing to not take part in residential parking permit programs, they said absolutely. They said that no problem. And I'm, so it's, it's really a concern to me that that was not put into the agreement. And I think, my second issue is, is I think that really is something that you're going to have to look at hard in the transit corridor because the idea is to build multifamily units through the corridor. And you're building those multifamily units next to neighborhoods that are already parking impacted. It makes sense to me that the developer, the owner of future buildings, would make sure that their properties are able to support the people who will be living.
Mr. Seymour, we lost your audio.
I can hear apprehension in his voice that the system that they've put in place will be able to support all of the people that will be moving into that building and their neighbors and family members and friends that may be visiting them. So I'm, I'm pretty concerned that we didn't have this, have the developer exclude themselves from a future parking permit program. And I think you are going to have to work on making sure that happens for future development in this area because the neighborhoods cannot take another car. Thank you very much for your, for listening.
Thank you for your comments. So there are no other speakers, so we'll, that'll be in the public comment on this item under consent. We'll bring it back to the City Council for any follow-up questions or comments. Councilmember Hamilton?
I just want to, Mr. Dinar was correct. This project's been a very long time coming. In fact, way back when I was on the TSPC, this project came before us to approve a, to approve a loading zone. And at that time, this was, it might have been five years ago. The, at that time, one of my committee members just made a comment, we were not voting on whether there was enough parking in this building because that was not, that was not before us and there wasn't any decision to be made about that. But one of my committee, fellow committee members commented that she didn't believe there was enough parking in this building. And the, Mr. Dinar was at that meeting and spoke at length about that there was plenty of parking. And so it is, it is a little disconcerting to hear the change over time in that regard, what, you know, after, after it's all been approved. I'm still going to go yes on it, but it's still, it is still a concern, and I think this is something that we need to, to watch for in the future as we, as we move ahead to get things, you know, and get these types of things in writing and built into the agreements as, as we can legally moving forward. Thank you.
Any other final questions from colleagues? Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my, my que, look, I want to see this project go to. And I think that over the years, as the community understood, okay, they're going to have enough parking for their residents and guests and a benefit to our community to having more homes. But it, I think, I think we were led to believe that if there was a parking permit program, the residents at this location wouldn't participate in it. And why this is so important is that we know currently parking anywhere near that building is extremely difficult. So legally, I, the question then would be to the City Attorney, this is not what we're voting on right now. Of that part, it seems has already passed to approve the project, and we didn't have that in there. So I'd like to, like to have our City Attorney opine on that.
So you're correct, Vice Mayor Medina. The, what's in front of you tonight are the improvement agreements only and not the relitigation of the conditions of approval for the project.
Thank you very much, City Attorney Zaffarano. I would, I would, I would ask the, I'm asking the developer that it's the right thing to do. Having your future residents out potentially further impacting the parking isn't very neighborly. And we will make sure that we'll do as much as we can to make sure this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Yeah, and the only thing that I would suggest is so that it's really documented, I think, when it goes through the process. And if we find ourselves in this unique situation to where it is one of those larger developments that's within a neighborhood area, that it's, that is stipulated yea or nay, that it's on there, people are agreeing to it, the process is going through, and therefore there's, there's nobody's, you know, if it's, they said five years ago, six years ago, that it's hard, folks change, council changes, staff changes, members change. So I think going forward, it would be helpful if it was something that was within that process, so at least it's noted, it's understood, and everybody's on the same page. My thought. Anything else on, and that was G? I'm going to move on to item H. Waive the second reading and adopt amendments to the San Bruno Municipal Code, Chapter 2.36, to complete transition of personnel board functions at the City Manager's Office and Human Resources Department. Vice Mayor?
This is going to be real quick, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge that I did receive a text from Peter Finn, 856, indicating he had no objection to the change in our committee.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I just had one quick question to City Manager. Because I know the Personnel Board used to deal with the list. When I say list, captain's list, et cetera. And as far as our battalion chief list and how long it would stay out there, we'd go to the Personnel Board, they would have input whether to extend the list or not and go out for another. So how is that going to be facilitated now?
So, Councilmember Medina, in response to your question, that responsibility will be assigned to the Chief People Officer, our Assistant City Manager, to make that decision. So it has been delegated to staff through the, through the action that is before you tonight. And so it is no longer a response, a decision of the board or of the City Council. And what that is, is we have an eligibility list after we run a recruitment. Typical administrative hiring process, you establish a qualified list. If no one has hired off that list for, let's say, six months, the list can extend for another six months or the list can expire. And so that, that decision will expire, the list will handle that.
Okay, there will be a process in place as, when that time comes. Okay. Anything else from my colleagues for item H? Not seen any. Let's move on to item J. Adopt resolution accepting the short-term plan to activate Centennial Plaza, the plaza improvement, authorizing the City Manager to implement plaza improvements, appropriating eighty thousand dollars from the parking loo fee fund.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Medina. Just wanted to, I did submit a question, and my interest in, on the proposed plan, basically what I, what I heard back is that there are some potential changes. And for those changes, perhaps staff can get an update, which kind of addresses a few of my questions. However, I want to make sure that they have plenty of funding to address the change from decomposed granite to pavers. So just wanted to let them, let staff know that perhaps it would be beneficial to increase that budget because pavers aren't cheap. And I'm also interested in a small stage, which could be made of pavers that, and some potential lighting for that area. I understand that we had, had at one point some solar capabilities, lighting left over from the streetlights that went out and, and over the couple of the years. So just wanted to bring that forward and make sure that we have the proper amount of funding for, for that and the changes that are identified. Thank you.
City Manager, please.
So I would recommend that the City Council do a small adjustment to the budget. As you know, the recommended use is parking loo funds. The recommended amount is eighty thousand now. We will be working with a landscape contractor to both design and implement these improvements. They are intended to be a quick win, a short-term project. And so if the City Council would like to provide additional budget, we can look to seeing if there's a possibility to upgrade and add lighting and additional pavers. Again, can't say for certain at this point, but I would recommend you can increase the budget from eighty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand. That will provide sufficient funds to get the project done, and any funds that are not spent will be returned to the parking loo fund.
Are there questions from colleagues, comments? Councilmember Salazar, sorry.
Thank you. So just, just in terms of, you know, changes and adding things, as a project manager, I got to tell you, scope creep is one of those things that just makes me cringe. And when we start, you know, we kind of agreed to some quick improvements and a budget. I'd like to see it stay as close to that as possible. I mean, going from eighty to a hundred and fifty, that's almost doubling it. And I was also wondering, typically, we have gone to the Park and Rec Commission with appropriations from parking loo funds. And I'm wondering if that has gone through the commission yet, and are they aware that we're proposing use of those funds for this project?
City Manager?
Sure. Councilmember Salazar, it is our intention to take the finalized plans to Park and Rec Commission so they can see those. And we will, I do not know if they, if it has gone to them just yet. Unfortunately, right now, I'm just blank on what the last agenda was for the Park and Rec Commission, but I believe it has not. But regardless, we will take it to them for their.
I wanted to also, you know, that's one thing that I know, in the past, that some commissioners were not pleased, shall we say, that, that topic, not that they controlled the money, but we do bring those things by them, get their input, they have it on their agenda for the public. The other thing is, is I know, and I know you're having just to kind of throw something out now, but to go from eighty to a hundred and fifty, almost doubling it, concerns me a little bit. I mean, it was a hundred and twenty-five, I know it's like a RICO, it's twenty-five thousand dollars. But just doubling it at a, at a moment's notice does concern me a little bit. And I know, I think, City Manager, my assumption would be that you're kind of obviously having to just kind of think about what, what it could cost, not really knowing.
Absolutely. Councilmember, I believe it was in April that we brought the concept to you. And council's direction was, if you can identify funding, bring this to us as soon as possible so you can implement this project. And so that, that is why it is before you. In fact, the direction is, we were going to include the funding in the proposed budget that would be adopted late June and available July 1. And council's direction was frankly, bring it to us sooner so we can get these, these improvements implemented downtown as soon as possible. And so that is why it is to you this soon. And yes, the recommendation to increase to eighty to one fifty was not an attempt to sort of double the budget. It was sort of to provide enough funds to get the job done. And again, any funds that are not spent will be returned to the parking loo fund. And we will certainly take the final design and the concept to the Park and Rec Commission and then move forward expeditiously. I think part of the, the concept of getting these improvements done soon is summer's fast approaching and having Centennial Plaza reactivated for the summer and potentially additional places for outdoor dining was of high importance. And so we, we are trying to accomplish your mission and both having, not wanting to have to come back for additional authority is why I said increase to one fifty. Know that we will be diligent. increase to 150. Know that we will be diligent with the funds as we always are.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna go to Councilmember Hamilton, then we'll take comments from the public.
So, might I suggest that, you know, I want to see improvements here as well, but I also don't like to see the budget go up by this much without knowing exactly what we're getting for it and all of that, and also don't want to put that on the spot to have to try to guess at that. Would, could a viable option be that we approve, we approve the $80,000 as is, and then as the final design is put forth, staff would be able to tell us that it would cost X, X thousand more to put in lighting, or whatever specific proposals, so that we can add to it later if we so choose, but approve this so that we can get started on it for all the reasons that the city manager just outlined. That's what I will recommend for tonight.
I think that might be a question for city manager.
Yeah, maybe I should have phrased it as a question, is that a feasible course of action?
We absolutely bring another staff report and appropriation request back to the City Council, and what that would mean is that we would not be able to interest a contract for the full amount, we would attempt to give the vendor an initial task order for the work that we have budgeted, and then bring another staff report back to the City Council, as well as go through the Park and Rec Commission. And so it may, it may have a chance, it may not, I literally don't know right now, but if we would like to increase the work that we're doing, it's certainly gonna come at an additional cost. If that cost exceeds $80,000, we'll come back, if that's council's desire, or you can provide additional allocation now, knowing that that would go to the Park and Rec Commission, and any funds that are not spent would be returned back to the Park and Lou Fund.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's anything from the public, because we do have somebody from the public who'd like to speak on this, now would be the opportunity to raise your hand. Again, this is in regards to the short-term plan to activate Centennial Plaza. City Clerk, if you can bring in our speaker.
Yes, Paul Wapinski.
Good evening. I'm just concerned about what I just heard. If you have a budget, that means you've already planned it, did cost estimates, and just throwing out numbers and shotgunning is not a way to do business. We, if you can update the budget to 150, that's fine, but you should have some justification behind it. It's really, you know, it's taxpayer money, and just saying that we'll return what we don't spend, you know, government usually doesn't give money back, so they're gonna spend what you give them. So we should, you know, have a budget, what's needed gets spent, what doesn't need it doesn't get spent. But just shotgunning is, I think it's a bad way to do business. If this was a regular business, instead of the government, they would throw you out of the office. That's all I got.
Thank you for your comments. I am not seeing anybody else from the public, so we'll close off for public comment and bring it back to council. Vice Mayor Medina.
Yeah, in defense of that last statement, it probably would be beneficial to share the original concept that had decomposed granite, and there's a fountain there, and when decomposed granite gets wet, it's not the best material to stand on, and the addition of pavers is a substantial improvement on a surface. So I believe that this is gonna be in that condition for quite a while, because we don't have a long-term solution to work to do with that property. And we need something that looks nice, and I want to see us move forward with it. To only allow $80,000 is not gonna be enough. That was a preliminary budget based on quickly putting something together at the council's direction. So I'm okay with allocating the amount, I trust staff will do their best to make sure that they're gonna be careful with spending those dollars, but it's also important to remember, it needs to look nice. It's nearly the centerpiece of our downtown, and for too long, it looked the way it looked. I'm in support of the 150, and I guess we're not to have a separate vote for this agenda item.
I'll check with the city attorney, but maybe the motion could be if it were to modify that, or if it needs to be a separate vote, we can always certainly do that. City Attorney?
From what I'm understanding, you can't include that in the, in the original motion if somebody wants to make that.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? Okay, you know, and I know it does say short-term, and I will tell you, I remember the day, it was Wells Fargo, I remember the day it was a lot with a fence that collected weeds and newspapers that blew, and I think our intent is short-term, but in all honesty, I think the short-term will become something longer. Everybody has a definition what short-term and long-term are, but I believe the intent is for short-term. However, no fault to staff or anyone else, and I go back to when it is what it is today, it was done in-house with what was currently at its disposal. When I say its disposal, what parks had to put that together. So it's a very nominal cost, and that's why it was done, because it was to be temporary. Well, obviously, we know that's, it's not temporary. So anyway, I just wanted to remind folks of that. So with that said, we are concluded with item J. We have consent for items A through J, and at this time, you could make a motion, as I've indicated, that modifies the resolution on J if there is council direction for it. Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, Mayor Medina, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the amendment to item J, increasing it to 150,000.
Do the chair.
If we could, before that gets seconded, if that, if there is gonna be a change to that one item, then I would like that item pulled and voted on separately.
Yeah, there was a motion, I haven't had a second yet, but there's been a, pretty amendment to the motion, which would need to pull it and have a vote separately. Does motion maker have a problem if we revert back and just deal with A through I first?
I have no problem with that, that's why I suggested that we pull it, but that's okay, absolutely, no problem.
Okay, just if it wasn't necessary, then we didn't have to. Councilmember Hamilton?
I would also, I think it should be a separate, voted on separately, not altogether, and I would make a suggestion to the motion maker that you also include the specific direction, that excess funds be returned to the Park and Lou Fund. I think that should be part of the motion, in my opinion.
Okay, so let's go with consent, items A through I. Is there action from council?
Move to approve.
Okay, city clerk, let you figure out who was second, who seconded it, but we have a motion and a second, and Mr. Hamilton says it doesn't matter either way. Roll call, please.
Councilmember, excuse me, Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye.
Motion.
Thank you very much, city clerk. Now we have item J, action from council, a separate vote.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve item J with the amending the amount from 80 to 150,000, with remaining funds to be returned to the Park and Lou Fund.
I'll second.
Motion made on second, on the question, there was also about it going to the Park and Rec Commission, is that for review, is that still part of the motion, or is that assumed, I don't want to assume?
Mr. Mayor, I would be assumed.
Okay. Is that correct, Mr. Hamilton?
Sure.
Okay, okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
While I wholeheartedly support the project and the submission that staff did, I can't support changing the budget so dramatically at the last hour, and so I'm gonna have to vote no.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye, and I'm voting aye, because I just am concerned the short-term will not be, but I appreciate, and I do agree, that this should not be the norm for council to double budget processes as we've given direction to staff, and in that going forward, my opinion.
Okay, so that's it, for consent, we're gonna move on to conduct the business, which is number six on the agenda, and we will first, we'll go to item A. City clerk.
Item 6A, receive the third quarter financial update report for fiscal year 2020-21 as of March 31, 2021, and adopt the resolution approving the third quarter budget amendment for the fiscal year 2020-21, operating in capital budget.
And we're gonna have our city manager, as well as our director, financial director son, and what I would ask is if there is about 23 slides, so if we could let them get through their presentation, and then we will start opening it up for questions. City manager?
Sure. Mayor Medina, we are totally ready to go forward with 6A. However, I would like to request, if possible, that we take item 6C. We do have the county's animal control and licensing manager with us, and she is ready to attend and support this item. With your concurrence?
Yes, I do see the attendees, the representative from the county, and obviously, I think this, the budget process may take a little bit of time with its presentations and questions from the community as well as from council, so yeah, I'm fine to move up the item C, so we can have that presentation and allow the other person not to have to stay with us that longer. City clerk, can we move to item C, please?
Item 6C, adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the County of San Mateo for continued provision, the animal control services for a five-year term beginning July 1, 2021.
City manager.
Sure. Thank you, councilmembers of the public, Javon Brogan, city manager. I will be presenting the item tonight, and thank you again for moving this item up. We have Lori Morton Fezal, the animal control and licensing manager with San Mateo County, here to answer any questions on the contract. She is attending four city council meetings tonight, doing a virtual round robin, because this agreement is going to all 20 cities in the county. And so let's begin with the objective. The objective tonight is to provide information on the proposed agreement with the County of San Mateo for continued provision of animal control services for a five-year term. As council knows, I have been a part of this process since 2019, when there was an extension of the current contract and an audit, and I serve on a panel of five city managers in the county for the RFP and for the contract negotiations. And so this agreement will be for five years, beginning in July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2025. The agenda for tonight's presentation is, we will provide a background, we will discuss the grant, we will discuss the financial impact, and then discuss recommendations, and finally take questions. So by way of background, shared services is something we talk about a lot. Animal control is actually the longest-serving shared regional service in our county. It has been that way since 1952, when the county contracted with Peninsula Humane Society and the SPCA, commonly referred to as PHS, for animal control field and sheltering services. Again, all 20 cities plus the county participate in this agreement, and frankly, we do that because we pool our resources and the economies of scale actually saves money. And so this agreement, as you'll see in a little bit, costs the city approximately $370,000 annually, and that's a cost that would be much greater if we did it alone or partnered with just a few other cities. In addition, the council and members of the public may know that through this countywide participation, we all jointly funded a $30 million animal shelter, and it's a 45,000-square-foot state-of-the-art facility that our residents enjoy and can use due to this county partnership. So by way of background, animal control is not something that we talk about often here in our city council meetings, but we are mandated to provide animal control services. And a few of those functions are receiving and housing stray animals, serving as a location for the public when looking for lost pets, and surrendering animals, sheltering animals, holding a spay and neuter clinic, as well as a vaccination clinic. There are other services that we provide for convenience, and we'll talk about a little, a few of these, and one is licensing, another is microchewing, and veterinary care and behavioral work, and so that's for aggressive animals to get them to be not so aggressive. So the agreement, the agreement currently will expire June 30, 2021, hence why the renewed agreement is important for this city, as well as the other cities in the county to act upon. San Mateo County released a request for proposals for animal care, control, and sheltering services in January of 2021, and so all of these negotiations happened for most part during COVID-19, and we held negotiations remotely with the vendor. And those negotiations begun in March of 2021 with Peninsula Humane Society. The RFP was sent to 70 vendors, as was noted in the staff report. The county did receive two proposals, and PHS was the successful bidder. The proposed agreement, again, runs for five years. The total amount of the agreement is $32.5 million. I know this next chart may be a little small for those at home, but I'll go through it really quickly. In total, the annual cost countywide is $6.2 million, and by the five-year number, will raise to just under $6.9 million, and you do that math for each year, and you get $32.5 million. It is broken up in detail here on personnel fringe, which is all the wraparound costs related to personnel, benefits, as well as other personnel expenditures, operating expenses, equipment, subcontract and other costs. It's important to note the structure of the agreement, and so the county hold a contract with the vendor, and then these, all 20 cities have a contract with the county. All 19 cities have a contract with the county, and so that contract covers the costs, services, our responsibilities to pay for the debt on the facility, as well as performance expectations. The county is directly responsible for oversight of animal control, and that is Lori's job, which is why she's here today, if you have any questions about the contract or operations. With the provision of the contract, I think I've said all of these, but it's important to note that the new contract has built-in incentives. There is an annual incentive of up to $100,000, and there are thresholds for the vendor to actually, if they meet their performance targets, to receive that financial incentive, but that financial incentive is put right back in to helping animals in our community. Also within the contract are increased response times and a number of benefits. So the staff report has a list of services that nearly covers a full page, and so it's on page 207 of the staff report, and I won't go through them all, but this little word cloud shows a number. So the contract covers rescuing animals, capturing large stray animals, investigations of animal bites and attacks, removal of dead animals from public property, removal of dead wildlife from private property, enforcement of lease laws and local ordinances, pickup of animals that are injured or in confined spaces such as schools, response to calls for animals in traffic, dangerous animal permit violations, stray patrol requests, as well as treatment services for injured animals, and it provides animal enrichment services while at the shelter. And there's a whole list in the And, and there's a whole list in, in the staff report. It's also important to note that the agreement that you have before you has a number of services that were not in the prior contract. And so, those are listed on page four of seven in your staff report, and just to highlight a few. One, uh, there is a requirement for an annual, uh, fiscal or performance audit in the contract, that is new. There is also, uh, twenty-six performance measures in the contract that the vendor must meet. That covers both response times, staffing, uh, as well, as well as service, uh, and care for the animals. There are also an additional four animal control officers, which is important for cities like, 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 like San Bruno because response times frankly have, have, have been an issue. And so the new contract has, uh, additional officers as well as response time performance measures that, that the vendor is required to meet. It's also worth noting that because Peninsula Humane Society operates a non, a philanthropic wing, they provide services that the cities do not have to pay for. Uh, that's adoption. Microchipping is one hundred percent covered, uh, for animals that are, that are adopted by their philanthropic wing, uh, as well as, uh, paying for spay and neuter. And so because, um, of the partnership that, uh, PHS has with, with donors, uh, all of the cities in the county actually receive benefits, uh, through their philanthropic efforts. And so the cost is divided up by, uh, all agencies in the county. Uh, San Bruno, as shown on the slide, pays five point seven one percent of that total cost. And next fiscal year, our estimated total is three hundred and sixty, uh, three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Uh, the cost is included in the proposed budget that will be before you. It's also worth noting that, uh, for, for council members, uh, that have, uh, paid attention to the, the budget in detail, this cost was budgeted in the police department. We had now pulled that out and put that in non-departmental. Uh, while the police department does, uh, work closely with PHS, they are not responsible for the contract, um, negotiations nor costs. And, and so that is handled by the city administrator's office, and so we put it in, in the non-departmental budget, which is a typical, uh, budgeting practice. And so, uh, I am available for any questions that the city council may have on, uh, the contract, uh, or the negotiation process, and, uh, uh, the county's animal control and licensing manager is also available. Thank you.
And if we could, uh, unshut the screen? Thank you so much, and a good, uh, good evening, Lori. So any, uh, uh, questions from colleagues? Uh, Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, thank you for that presentation. I just wanted to follow up on a question I had sent earlier, um, to staff, hopefully, hoping there, there would be some preparation, but around the, um, the lease, so please do correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like the lease is approximately forty thousand dollars a year, um, and some of this is somehow contributed to the construction of the new building. And so the question that I have is, um, once that cost is, so at some point realized, understanding that this is years from now, is there also an agreement that the cities that contributed would no longer be contributing to a lease?
Yes, so let me take that. The forty-eight thousand dollars that you're referring to is a part of our annual payment. That cover, it's, it's mentioned that the lease, it's actually lease revenue financing, which is the debt on the thirty, nearly thirty million dollar facility. And so that annual payment for the twenty-eight million, three hundred thousand dollar facility is approximately, uh, eight hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars a year. San Bruno's portion of that is forty-eight thousand. And so that is a, um, lease revenue debt payment for thirty years, and once that debt is satisfied, we will not, uh, pay towards that lease revenue payment.
Great, and then, um, as far as the actual, um, hold on, as far as the proportionate share of costs? So, I understand that it's separated by city, and I think that was really helpful, but I would love to see an actual metrics, and, and I know that this was requested in the past, but an actual metrics of how many calls, um, the agreement is quite long, but there is a section in the agreement that actually lays out what the expectations are for the contractor within every area possible. And so, um, but I didn't see a metric breaks down each one of those by city. And so while I, I am gonna support this item tonight, it, it has been requested before, and I, um, I would really like to see it. I think it's important that we really understand how many calls are actually coming from San Bruno for each one of these areas, how many are being responded to, so that we know what that proportionate share is going to. Um, and then lastly, I just wanted to thank, um, thank the city manager for ensuring that this contract was procured, um, and that we have a reasonable end date, um, so that there is a competitive bidding process. Thank you.
And then, uh, I saw that Lori's mic went on, and if you had something to add, that's great as far as to that, as well as just for those listening, if you could tell on Rollins exactly where the facility is located, because some folks may be going, well, where is this? Because I know it's a beautiful location, and, uh, you can adopt and, and all kinds, volunteer, all kinds of stuff.
There's actually two shelters. Uh, first, I want to say thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, the county shelter is at twelfth Airport Boulevard, right on the bay. It's right next to County Point Golf Course. Uh, the Humane Society, the nonprofit, has one also in Burlingame on Rollins Road, and that's where the adoptions take place. And the shelter is completely finished and constructed, and again, when COVID's over, if anybody would like a tour, I'd be more than happy to take everybody through the shelter. It's a beautiful building.
That's my good old puppy. Um, so, um, uh, was there anything else to add to Councilmember Mason's, uh, in regards to numbers? Or I can turn that to City Manager, I know you were on the ad hoc committee for City Manager?
No, I, I, I can answer the question about the reports, and I do want to thank, uh, City Manager Javon. He was amazing on the negotiating team. Um, he asked very good questions, uh, and participated and helped us negotiate a contract, which is less than what we currently pay today, so thank you very much. Um, yes, we will be receiving monthly reports, quarterly reports and annual reports. Those reports can be broken down, uh, by city, uh, by calls that are responded to in your city. If you'd like to see the ones currently, I can send those over to the city manager, so you can see what your current statistics are, and then going forward, I will be sending them over monthly. But we can report out on that. And if there's anything else you want to see when you see the reports, let me know, and we can, uh, try to get those for you.
Thank you. Uh, City Manager, anything to add, or? That was, took care of it, took care of it. Okay, other, other questions from colleagues? Uh, Councilmember Salazar?
Just a quick comment, I also wanted to add my thanks to the city manager for all of his work on this. I know he, he did put in a lot of time on, in getting all this together. Um, you know, what the services that the Peninsula Humane Society provide are, uh, a lot of people don't realize that, you know, all the things that they do, and it's one of those things you don't appreciate until you actually need to call for their assistance, and then you realize how, uh, how important it is to have that. And so, um, you know, I, I visit both facilities, uh, the, the building on Rollins Road is definitely very impressive. Uh, took my puppy there a while back to get some counseling, uh, when she was young, and so, um, definitely appreciate their services and everything that they're doing, and, uh, I, I'm glad to see this contract coming forward.
And we can, we can hear the dog, uh, now. Uh, uh, Councilmember Hamilton?
Uh, a, a, actually, uh, Councilmember Salazar's, uh, comment was almost exactly what I was gonna say, because it's all, all, all of the same stuff, very appreciative of the, the, uh, our, our city manager and, and staff putting together this, this process. Um, this was all brand new to me, how this all works, and the, the, the way that the, um, that the costs are shared and the, the formula used to come up with the share for each city is logical and fair. Um, and I also would echo, uh, the recommendation that folks, uh, visit these, these beautiful facilities. Um, we, uh, we got our cat, we adopted our cat from there, um, who's, who's been a, a guest, a unwanted guest in some of our meetings. And, uh, and Penny sleeping there in the background took obedience lessons in the, in that beautiful facility, so I highly recommend, um, uh, folks visit it. Um, and I'm, I'm very supportive of this action tonight.
Anything else from my colleagues? Uh, I, I'm gonna, I have something, but City Manager?
Yes, so, uh, at the risk of bringing up something new, uh, just before walking up here, uh, I gotta note that a press release will be released, uh, soon tonight about a mountain lion incident that we had in San Bruno. Uh, and it's, uh, apropos to what we're discussing, because, uh, PHS will help out, uh, with mountain lion sightings, and, uh, when an officer is there, uh, it was a, a, a key part of our discussions, uh, they will respond, and they have to respond immediately, it is a priority on call. And so we did have a mountain lion incident last night, where a mountain lion actually, uh, broke into a residence. Um, and so, um, thankfully, no one was harmed, uh, but, but we do know that we have wildlife issues, and while those are under the jurisdiction of, uh, the California Department of Fish and Game, uh, this contract and, uh, the support from Peninsula, uh, Humane Society and their, uh, animal control officers is a part of our immediate response force, uh, on these instances, uh, where if there is a, a dangerous situation and someone, uh, and an animal needs to be, um, tranquilized, uh, they, 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 they have that, uh, ability and, and can advise. So, uh, know that, uh, this is an important, um, uh, contract, and, and thank the, the council, and, and thank Lori for all of her work.
Um, and, and we know, uh, many of our neighboring, uh, communities are experiencing, uh, that, as you watch on the news, not just here, but elsewhere as well. Um, this is one of our initiatives, but obviously it was being worked on. This is one of my concerns, because, um, though we've had reports available to us, uh, maybe we just haven't looked or asked, uh, but at the same time, with this new agreement, I, I like the, uh, other elements that have been added. Of course, the costs and the service level are always been things that we sometimes have heard, we're not being able to get it within a timely fashion, or they're just too busy. So, I appreciate the items that have been added in. Um, I do also want to thank the, the city manager for his time as well as the other, uh, folks. I, I know it wasn't just you, but I know there were others, but you were there, uh, from, uh, starting it, finishing it. And so I think that we're finding ourselves in a better spot, uh, than we were, so I want to, um, thank everyone for that. And final comments from, uh, Mr. Marty Medina, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just wanted to, uh, thank everyone for their work on this. As for the mountain lion, is there a phone number that is operable at late at night? Is there WhatsApp phone number that people should call? Because, um, I'm hearing from more residents and seeing it on Nextdoor or Facebook of, uh, more sightings, and maybe that's because there's so many cameras that we have out, but, um, what number should someone call?
There is a, there is a number, nine-one-one. Call nine-one-one if, uh, a animal, uh, whether it's a mountain lion or other, is posing a risk. Uh, our officers will come out and assess, they do have the ability to contact California Fish and Game, uh, our Peninsula Humane Society, as well as the Puma Project that tracks and tags most of the mountain lions, uh, in our area. And so they have immediate access to them, uh, to, to assess, uh, if they're tagged, uh, and where that mountain lion may be, if it is tagged. And so nine-one-one is the number that people should call.
Okay, um, Councilmember Hamilton?
I could follow up to that, if it's not a life-threatening sighting, you know, if so, if I, I spot an mountain lion on my camera from the night before, should we call the business line for that?
So, if we're a dangerous animal, you call, uh, nine-one-one, uh?
Even after the fact?
You can call the non-emergency line to report it. Uh, there are also other numbers that, I'll, I'll hand, I don't have, Lori may, Lori may have them, but we can certainly provide those, and I know staff is working on, uh, mountain lion communications to the general public that will provide, uh, a whole host of resources to the community, uh, given the, the prevalence that we're having, as we all know, uh, largely due to the fires, uh, and mountain lions being driven out of, out of, out of their habitat. Uh, and one of the things I was able to learn is, we live in a woozy area, um, uh, which is the urban wildlife, uh, interface, and mountain lion sightings are normal, it is a part of where we live. Uh, and so now that everyone has ring cameras, uh, you are seeing mountain lions when you live really close on that urban wild, wildlife interface, that unfortunately is a part of nature. Uh, but, um, there, there are instances where, uh, absolutely you call nine-one-one, and there, there are places to report mountain lion sightings, and we will make sure that those are provided.
Thank you. Okay, uh, information is coming out. Uh, again, uh, I want to, uh, thank Lori for your time, I know you're making the, uh, county rounds, and, uh, obviously, thanks to, uh, Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Salazar. We even got a plug for the services that are provided, uh, for, uh, everybody's interest. So, with that, thank you, and then we'll bring it back to council for action on item C, please.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second it. Uh, motion, Hamilton second and Salazar, uh, to introduce the resolution to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with the County of San Mateo, uh, for the continued provision of animal controlled services for a five-year term beginning July one, twenty twenty-one. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye. Again, thank you Lori, and good luck, and enjoy the rest of your week.
All right?
Very much.
Thank you. And so we will, uh, go ba, uh, we're still on conduct of business, but let's go back to item A and read that quickly. And again, as you know, that was received, the third quarter financial update report for twenty twenty twenty-one as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, adopt a resolution approving the third quarter budget amendment for, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty dash one, operating and capital budget. Turn it over to the city manager and then the finance director, and again, if we could, um, hold our questions until the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, um, and members of the council. Um, my name is Chen Yusong, I'm the Finance Director, located in San Bruno. And today I'm going to present the third quarter financial update for this fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Okay, uh, the objective of this presentation is ask the council to receive the third quarter financial update report as of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. There is no action need to be ta, taken, uh, tonight. And then second item needs some, um, action from the council to adopt the resolution amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-one operating and capital improvement budget by approving the budget amendments. Uh, the agenda today includes the general fund budget overview, the third quarter financial projections, and, and the city manager is going to come up to, to discuss, to provide a budget preview for the next fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, and in the end, the council will discuss and deliberate. And again, what we're going to talk about, quarter, third quarter of this fiscal year, which starts from January two thousand twenty-one, ends in March two thousand twenty-one. Uh, here is the general fund's budget overview. Um, if you do remember, uh, in, when the current year budget was adopted, uh, we're estimating a forty-eight point seven million in revenues for the general fund and forty-nine point three million in expenditures. So we had asked the council permission to use five hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars for, um, of the fund, general fund balance to cover the shortfall. Uh, here is a look at the general fund's revenue summary and expenditures. Uh, general fund revenue is relatively diversified, and twenty-five percent of the general fund revenue came from property tax, and then, uh, then another, uh, transfers, and then other revenues accounted about twenty-one percent of the general fund revenue, that's the second largest item. The third one is sales tax, you buy thirteen percent. Expenditure size were not so diversified, and most of our expenditures are coming from, uh, staffing-related costs. By department, uh, safety means police and fire departments account over forty-seven percent of the, um, general fund expenditures. Um, here is the third quarter general fund update. Um, um, as of the general, as of the March thirty-first, we are looking at the entire, in, in, we estimate as of year end we'll receive about fifty million dollars in revenue for general fund, and then just around forty-eight million dollar in expenditures operationalized. And we're actually going to see, uh, where And we're actually going to see, where with operational activity, we're going to see about a million dollars in surplus this year, and we'll end the year with a fund balance of 2.4, almost $2.4 million. Here is a look at the general fund revenue for this fiscal year. We did amend the general fund revenue by making several cuts, and I'll talk about cuts in a few minutes later. So as of right now, we're anticipating the amended budget, the revenue will exceed the amended budget by $286,000, but that's based, that is based on the decreased amended budget. There are some cuts involved in the amended budget is vehicle license tax. We cut the vehicle license tax revenue projection by $621,000 because more schools in the county converted from non-basic schools to basic schools, and then they reduced the funding resource for vehicle license fees. We're also seeing a decrease in the sales tax receipt. Sales tax will be down by another $350,000. And departmental revenues are also down by $377,000. To come up, to make, for some of the lost revenue, charge for services and transfer other funds are going to exceed the amended budget by 1.5 million. So that's kind of put us a little bit in the good. Spending wise, the city staff has exercised proactive spending controls, and now we will end the year with expenditure about 1.2 million below the amended budget. Expenditure savings are mostly associated with the position vacancies and delayed recruitment. Social restrictions imposed by coronavirus have caused some service reductions specifically related to community service department, and they had to cut a lot of programs because of the social distancing mandates. Here is a look at enterprise and internal service fund budget update. Enterprise funds, as of the third quarter of this year, the revenues and expenditure receipts are mostly on par as the previous year. One thing I want to talk about is the city net. And city net for the year end estimate, they're going to receive about 9.4 million in revenues. Expenditures is going to be $9.7 million. That expenditure includes the debt service item. Operationalize, the city net is actually going to break, break even, meaning their operating management revenues will closely packed to their operating expenditures. However, there is no excess funding provided for their debt service, which is related with the router debt, and it's about $350,000. That's why you are going to see at the year end that you're going to look at a debt, an additional deficit of $302,000. There are some improvements in this, some budget control effort made in the city net. I think we should applaud for them, given their very difficult financial situation. The TV content expense has been reduced by almost $800,000. They invested $115,000 in equipment replacement, IT TV platform, and limited fiber bills. The revenue gap is really caused by some delinquencies. They have lost, the city net lost revenue from about 250, 250 service accounts every month. You know, throughout the year, they served about a total of 7,000 homes. It's actually goes to 7,000 accounts. They have increased, proposed some increase in the average revenue per user. It was approved, the approved target was $120 per month, but in reality, they're only able to collect about $109 a month, so there's a $10 difference. And there is a substantial amount of delinquency yield out, which is really quite a bit of drag on the revenue for the city net enterprise funds. So there, the, they have some budget management measures, which include the delinquent account collection efforts and the service downgrade. They're not disconnecting any of those of their accounts. They have just-in-time inventory replenishment and the equipment management policy. They also intend to equalize expenditure with operating revenues. And now we have seen them done that, making a valiant effort, trying to equalize their expenditure and operating revenues. Here is a look at the city's internal service funds as of March 31st. Throughout the year, we're expecting to, the internal service funds to be on par with the previous year, and the internal service fund is mostly funded by the city departments or the person who can contribute to the, to the internal service funds to make it a whole and then try to maintain a certain level of fund balance for those funds. So there is no issue there. There are some budget amendment requests, and the total amendment request accounts about $242,000. So with that, that's my part for the third quarter financial update. And now, and select them to the city manager for the budget review.
Thank you, Chen Yu. I want again by thanking Chen Yu, who started in March and immediately begun our budget development process and really jumped right in. And so my job right now to give you a quick overview of next year's budget. I will just recap for council. What you heard was the third quarter update for the current fiscal year. Know that the fact that we're ending a little up in the general fund is a reflection of we cut and we cut deeply, and expenditures in the general fund have been throttled back, and so we're ending with not spending approximately $1.2 million of the top of expenditures, which is great news, and that's the constantly moderating expenditures as best as we can. But just a quick highlight of the coming fiscal year, so fiscal year 2021 for the public, we operate on a July 1 to June 30 fiscal year. And what's before you is a highlight of the general fund preliminary budget, which shows that with using the fund balance that we have projected at the end of the year, revenues are 4.9, 49.7 million. Expenditures are projected at 51.1 million, and so that leaves a deficit of 1.4. And in utilizing the money within, within fund balance, the 2.3, that leaves the remaining fund balance of 0.9 million or roughly 900,000. But what that does is that takes us under our policy target to have a $1.5 million fund balance in the general fund at budget adoption. And so we will need to transfer in $600,000 to make that policy limit. I will say, and I know the city council knows this, this is a highlight, at the end of this week, you will receive your proposed budget from the city. And then in June, we will set about a host of study sessions and public hearings on the budget. So this is just a quick highlight, as you know. It's also important to note on this slide is we and all other municipalities in the country frankly have the American Rescue Act funds that were meant to provide resources to cities like ours that have lost revenue due to COVID-19. And we know that our annual revenue has lost more than 5 million due to COVID-19. And so that revenue number would be a lot higher, and with expenditures at 51, without COVID-19, we wouldn't have this deficit, because we cut deeply. And in this baseline budget, we are not projecting to return all of those expenditures that were cut from the budget. So yes, we still have a challenge. Yes, through the budget, we will talk about how we apply that American Rescue Act funds, which is $8 million, that have to be spent between, over the next, I think, three and a half years, it's by December 31, 2024. And so that money was meant to restore a portion of the funds that cities have lost. And so we will be proposing to use a portion of those funds to help out our 2021 budget because we will still have a deficit, because our revenues will not be back at pre-pandemic levels. Other funds, just to highlight, our water and wastewater or sewer fund are in good standing. And as the city council knows, you canceled the 5% rate increases on those funds because those funds are in good status and can do without those rate increases this year. City Net, as our finance director mentioned, has actually done a great job to throttle back their expenditures due to loss in both customer base and loss in revenue due to non-payment. And they're projected to end next year and the current year with operating expenditures and operating revenues being, if not even, very, very close to even. The challenge is that they are not able to pay the money that is owed to the general fund, and that is both for the annual debt service and the annual fund deficit. I will say on City Net that the city council knows we will continue to talk about strategies for City Net as an enterprise and as an operation. As you know, your auditor recommended that we undertake a, a third-party study of the City Net business plan. We are getting ready to release an RFP for that, and we will continue to talk about strategies for City Net. And again, as the council knows, the first thing that we've done is really renegotiated a number of contracts and broad expenditures as close to revenue as possible. Stormwater, as the public knows, we have a current storm drainage and flood protection fee that is going through a Prop 218 property owner election now. That fund will enter into the negative by approximately $1 million next year. And so should that property, Prop 218 election fail, we will need to address that $1 million, and those are expenditures that are planned for our stormwater system in 2021. And so we will have some tough decisions to make. Either we will throttle back expenditures and decrease maintenance and service on our stormwater system, or we'll supplement that from the general fund. And what you've seen in this prior slide is the general fund is ending with fund balance of 1.9 million. And so to balance the general, the general fund, we will be using ARA funds. And so we will begin to enter into a deficit position in stormwater, and we will, if the current measure doesn't pass, make some tough decisions on, on what we do with our, with the stormwater system. Now, this does not include our reserves. The city does have reserves. I just want to point out that what we're talking about here is operating, and that's important for the public to know. We're talking about operating funds, not reserve funds. But stormwater will be entering into a ongoing deficit position, subject to approval of the fee. And so we would not want to burn our reserve funds on that, but we will have to throttle back those expenditures or find some way to cover those funds. So you have received the third quarter update. There's no action with regard to that date. It is just a reporting out. There is one action, adopt a resolution amending the operating and capital budget by approving the budget amendments as required. And that concludes our presentation. Again, the proposed budget is due out at the end of this week, and then the city council will have budget deliberations and discussions beginning in the month of June, with adoption planned for your last meeting in June in order for next year's budget to take effect on July 1. Thank you.
Thank you to the finance director and the city manager for their presentation. And I'd like to bring it to council for questions on the presentation. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First question, slide 16, regarding the insurance. Seeing the expenditure at 90% of budget, do we, do we have, maybe we can have a couple comments on that number being so high? Is that expected to be at this point, or what's happening there? That's, do you want a number of questions, Mr. Mayor, or do you want one at a time?
Great, great point. City manager, finance director, what would you prefer?
It would be nice to have all the questions from each individual council member at one time, and then we will address them after each council member.
Perfect. All right. Vice Mayor, continue.
Yes, yes, thank you. For the non-payment in City Net services, how much, how much is the non-payment? And that, that would be eligible for ARA funding? The last question is, for the ARA funding, how much is it over the number of years? If we can get a breakdown, I had somebody ask me the other day, and I want to make sure we're after it and answering it. Thank you.
Any other colleagues with questions? We'll, we'll put them all forward. Councilmember Mason, please.
Sure.
No, I'm sorry, city manager, I thought you wanted all the questions first?
I'm sorry, I may not have been clear. I think we can answer the council member's Medina's question and then go to the next council member.
Okay, so we'll take a council member at a time. So thank you, city manager, for the clarification, and we'll, and we'll look forward to your responses.
Sure. So let's begin with the last course question and then go up. How much revenue is the city receiving from the American Rescue Act? It is $8 million that has to be spent by December 31, 2024. The next question was, how much is the City Net non-payment amount? And how much can be used from the ARA funds? So while we look for the non-payment amount, it is important to note that we will have those discussions at budget time. The staff will not be recommending that we cover utility non-payments, whether it is City Net, water, or water, sewer, or garbage charges through ARA funds. There are other state and federal funds that help customers pay utility accounts. And so we will be, we came out to our customers with delinquent utility accounts and providing them with the information where they can apply to the state program first for, to participate if they meet the criteria so that those utility bills can be paid. And so that's first step before we use the ARA funds to cover delinquent utility bills.
The City Net director informed me that the delinquent amount is roughly about $25,000 a month. So we're estimating they're losing about $300,000 during revenue from customers.
Yes. It's important to note, though, that the loss of revenue does not dollar-for-dollar translate into a delta between revenue and expenditures. So if a customer bill is $80 and they don't pay that $80, there's a portion of that that is hard cost to the city. And so just know that a $300,000 loss in revenues is not necessarily a gap of $300,000 to the enterprise revenues over expenditures.
Regarding the insurance question, that's the part I am not so sure where you are looking at the high percentage. So for insurance, as of March 31st, we received the 75% of our budgeted revenues. We spend about 77% of our budgeted expenditures. The 98% was actually from last year.
Got it. Got it, thank you. Last follow-up question, Mr. Mayor?
Please, Mr. Vice Mayor. Sure, please, Mr. Vice Mayor.
The ARA money, is there a limit on how much could be spent per year? Or the limit is just it has to be spent by twenty twenty four?
There is no limit on how much can be spent per year. However, ARA will be paid out in two installments. Uh half in um um in June twenty-one this year and the other half one year from then. There there are uh tons of regulations uh around expenditures and use of ARA. We we'll cover that during budget. The U.S. Treasury uh is uh continuing to come out with uh regulations and clarifications of ARA expenditures. Uh and we will certainly handle all of that uh through our budget process.
Thank you.
Real real quick, and then we're gonna go to Councilmember Mason on the ARA. I understood that too, two installments, like you said. And is it that don't have to be spent, but they have to be obligated by, as you said, December thirty first, twenty twenty-four? And does that hold true for the second amount or does that go to twenty twenty-six?
The newly issued that should I read Harmon guidance that that uh we need to obligate the per provided appropriate money by December thirty first, two thousand twenty-four. But we should have spent all of that by December thirty first, two thousand twenty-six.
Okay, thank you. Just since we're on the top, I wanted to clarify. Uh Councilmember Mason.
Thank you. So I did want to just ask um some questions around the, starting with the hotel occupancy tax. I know that in the question I asked earlier and staff has responded to around the short-term rentals that this is gonna be coming back to us at a later time. Um but what what I think just at this time, what is the status? It it does feel like we are losing money. Um I do see people staying at Airbnbs. Uh there are numerous articles that say that Airbnb has um has done well during COVID, um shockingly, um given that people aren't traveling as much. And so I am curious to know, you know, exactly where where are we really with this uh with this item?
And then uh yeah, do you mind?
Yep, no, no problem. The other one is a question that has also been asked in the past. So if this could be answered more effectively, I think at the next um budget meeting, it would be really helpful uh to really understand uh the cardroom tax and whether there are any other taxes that are coming um from Artichoke Joe's and whether what those are in comparison to other cities. So that doesn't have to be answered today, but I I think that should be answered at the next meeting, at the next um budget meeting. Um because in the report, there aren't any financial numbers. And I that staff did provide that to us in an email uh later. But I do think it's important that we really have a better understanding of how these taxes, uh Artichoke Joe's, contribute to our funds. There was a section on internal service funds. And I think the question really around the internal service funds is if the city has been um many of the buildings within the city services have been closed over the past year, then what are the fees associated with? Understanding that we've had some emergency services like fire and police that are open um and understanding that people may have been reporting, like maintenance workers may have been reporting to work. Uh I'm just trying to figure out what are the maintenance concerns that have arisen if workers or buildings were closed to the public over the past year? And I think that is my last question, thank you.
Thank you. Uh city manager?
So let's begin with the uh short-term rental regulations. So uh the city council uh did approximately a year ago uh establish um a short-term rental ordinance uh which apply our TLT transient occupancy tax to short-term rentals. Uh staff uh has been working on implementing that. Um as the city council knows, the the two departments that are chiefly responsible for implementing the short-term rental, both the finance department and the community and economic development department, that project was being led by those department directors. Uh over the last year, both of those department directors uh separated from the city, can you the current finance director beginning in March uh and the uh e- community and economic development director uh beginning a- approximately uh five months ago. And so implementation of the short-term rental ordinance is a staff work item. Um it is being supported by the city attorney office. Uh staff staff is working with uh both the online platforms as well as communicating with ACL, which we recently entered into a contract with for um risk for processing of our business license taxes. They may take over short-term rental um um tax implementation. We are having those discussions now at this moment. I'm not able to give the city council a precise um deadline on when that will be implemented, just so that it is on staff's work program. And the question that we responded to today, we did commit uh to providing you with an update at a later time. So I just don't want to provide um a date now without uh checking in uh with 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 all of the staff that are working on that project. Uh with regard to the cardroom tax, uh duly noted and we will uh discuss that uh during the budgetary process. Uh sure, um.
So um councilmember Mason, we uh although our staff report didn't address any number, didn't say any number for regarding the cardroom tax, there is attachment to the staff report called attachment two. And then that um each uh major revenue items are listed and the cardroom tax is listed as uh midway in the revenue section. For the year, we estimate to receive about two million dollars from cardroom tax. That's the base, that estimated based on thirty-eight tables. We just recently received uh a notice from the uh Artichoke Joe's owner that he wants to increase the dark tables from thirty-eight to forty-three effective June one. So next fiscal year, we are anticipating a little bit more revenue from uh from cardroom. But that's the summary of the year. Um I don't have an answer to comparing to other cities, so we can do more research on that. But each city is different. It every city has a different kind of a cardroom situation. Uh some city may have more and some city may have less. Um but that's all, I can't find more and provide the council additional information with comparison.
Thank you.
Just on the the cardroom, my understanding is every July one, based on the CPI, that there is an automatic increase that occurs for the uh cardroom table tax, I'll call it table tax, which is quarterly uh based on numbers of tables that are authorized uh which go in groups of four. So at current, it decreasing to that would then go to the next level of more monies per table uh for all of those because it goes into another tier, is that correct?
That is correct. In addition, uh our cardroom tax is charged on a per-table basis uh which uh was actually more advantageous than um some other neighboring cities with cardrooms that have a revenue-based tax. So for example, during COVID nineteen, we did not lose um cardroom revenue because it was based on a uh guaranteed per-table tax. Uh whereas other cities that had a revenue structure based on revenue had a significant decrease in in their cardroom revenue. But again, uh we will talk about that uh during budget and and can come back with with more information and more uh in-depth discussion.
Are there councilmember questions?
Mr. Mayor, I think there was one more question
Oh, sorry.
Service funds. Uh so councilmember Mason uh asked a question about internal service funds and were there any savings uh as a result of municipal facilities uh being closed during uh the pandemic uh and uh some employees working remotely? And so at a high-level answer, uh there are no significant savings uh in internal service funds due to COVID nineteen. It's important to note that our internal service funds are building maintenance, fleet and uh IT services. With regard to I- IT, IT uh was fully functional during the pandemic, if not more so. Uh with with regard to a buil- building maintenance, uh there were no significant appreciable uh changes in their in the 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 cost of their operations due to COVID nineteen. It's also important to note that why, while while some of our facilities were closed to the public, many of um our employees were actually on work or on rotational schedules. So City Hall um was was actually not not closed during the pandemic uh and 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 was very much uh a place of work. And not just police and fire staff, but uh staff from our our HR division, our finance division, as well as uh both the public works and community and economic development counters, for the most part, uh were 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 open and accepting um of uh of customers uh that that made appointments and uh uh they were uh employees that were on site for processing and employees were on a rotational schedule. And so there there uh with regard to our internal service funds, uh we are not seeing any significant savings due to the pandemic.
Thanks. Uh are there uh questions from colleagues? Uh councilmember Salazar.
Just uh one question really quick. So uh the big um adjustment item in in this proposal is for the traffic engineering consultant. And I read in the staff report that initially the cost for this consultant was gonna be offset by savings from an open position uh being that we uh lost our our previous traffic engineer. And uh it also said that the position was later frozen. And then so I guess the fun the funding went away and now we need an additional um source of funds to to um uh obtain the consultant. And so I just kind of, I wanted to hear sort of the the process. Was there at one time, was it decided that we didn't need the position and therefore it was it was frozen? Or how how did we get to the point where we went to having an offset to not having it and needing it again?
Sure, uh thank you, councilmember Salazar, for that question. Uh the answer is actually multi-part. So uh yes, we uh had a traffic engineer uh that separated from the city to take uh a job at another agency. That position was vacant when we developed this current-year budget for twenty twenty twenty, for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. It was envisioned that that position would stay vacant because we had a open recruitment and continued to recruit for that position. However, what uh the the council and I I I know our our employees remember is that when we adopted the twenty twenty-one budget, we had a fiscal shortfall that we were attempting to cover through uh employee retirements or um employees um uh potentially layoffs. And so at the last minute, we had a number of employees uh long tenure that elected to retire. What they did was they, in effect, saved a a position that was slated to be laid off. And so toward the beginning of the fiscal year, there was an all-out effort to avoid layoffs. And so we essentially froze every vacant position uh in order to avoid uh having an an employee layoff. One of those vacant positions was the city engineer position. We continued to recruit for that position uh and hire a contractor to fill in for that work. And we used professional services money that we had to pay for that that contractor. One of the challenges is a contract traffic engineer is more expensive than an employee contract uh contract uh than employee traffic engineer. And so this is one of those um interesting positions where when we have a vacancy, it actually costs us more money. Uh because the contractor uh uh in in the market makes more than uh what uh we we pay to em- employ a position. We have been unsuccessful in our recruitment of a traffic engineer and that is still an open position that we are still recruiting for. Uh we are doing an assessment and may have to uh take a look at our long-term strategy for filling that position. Finding traffic engineers um in the Bay Area, on the peninsula uh and at our compensation level uh is ex- is is extremely challenging. And so unfortunately, that work uh doesn't go away and and much of it is mandated. And so we will continue to have to contract for that work at a higher cost.
Okay, yeah, thank you for for uh reminding us of of all of those uh events that transpired. And and so if if we were uh eventually to be successful in filling that position, then uh these funds could be then transferred to cover the the salary of the of the FTE. Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you. Any other uh questions from colleagues? Uh thank you, Mr. Hamilton. And I had a similar question that councilmember Salazar just asked, so um that the detail helped me kind of understand it better too. So at this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to speak on this topic, please raise your virtual hand. We'll give it a moment and again, this is on the third quarter financial update report. Not seeing any, I'll bring it back to council uh for any action um um regarding um the uh if we wish to take action and adopt a resolution.
Through the chair, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution making the budget adjustments.
Oh, second.
Motion made and seconded. Uh roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason? Hi. Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Um now we'll move to item uh under uh business item B, please.
Item six B, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to vote on behalf of the city in the storm during engine flood protection fee property owner mail ballot election.
And I'm gonna pause because I do see a hand up and I don't know if it was for the third-quarter budget or if it's for this topic. So uh maybe we can check really quick. Because I didn't see the hand prior to the announcement of this topic, but can we just double-check?
Sure, um Paul Wapinski?
Yes, for this topic.
Okay, well, okay, we'll we'll get the report and then we'll um a common call upon you. Thank you. Uh city manager?
We're on share the screen for a brief presentation. Alright, so many presentations. Okay, alright, uh we have a brief four-slide presentation. Uh and so it's our very last item on the agenda, it will not be long. Uh as the city council knows, on April sixth, uh you directed um you adopted a resolution submitting a storm drain, a storm drainage and flood protection fee to all property owners in the city in a Prop two eighteen mail-in ballot election. Uh with that process, all property owners within the city will be assessed uh the proposed fee and uh have been mailed a ballot. That includes the city. Uh it also includes all all private parties, all public agencies, uh any school district property, county property, uh any property owned by nonprofits or religious organizations. And so uh every property owner, whether you are a natural person uh or a corporation or a public entity, uh votes in a property-based election. This is distinctly different than a county election that we are more familiar with when when only natural uh persons can vote. Uh and so the item before you is to uh essentially provide direction to the city manager on voting on city properties uh by the required June fifteenth deadline. Uh as the staff report notes, this is not a un- a uncommon occurrence. The city of Burlingame, who had their uh stormwater fee in twenty nineteen, uh voted on their ninety-five parcels. And so the city of San Bruno uh owns a hundred and three parcels uh for various facilities, things like our civic center, our courtyard, our recreation facilities, fire stations, parking lots, parks, uh open space. uh, open space, our footpath, our city net operation, utility infrastructure, whether that's a water tank, a pump station, a well station, uh, or a city net, uh, head-in. And many of these properties are in residential neighborhoods. Um, for example, the facility that we have at, uh, 590 Maple, the, the water pump station and well. Uh, and, and so the proposed fee that would apply to, uh, all property owners as well as the city, uh, is point zero four nine eight eight five nine, uh, cent, uh, per square foot of imperious surface area. Uh, and the estimated cost of our fair share, uh, from the city, uh, is a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars from various funds. Uh, and so the action that is before you tonight is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to vote on behalf of the city, uh, on the storm drainage, uh, and flood protection fee, property owner melon ballot election. Uh, direction is requested. There are two options, uh, a yes vote or an affirmative supporting the enactment of the storm drain and flood protection fee on city-owned parcels, again reflecting, uh, the city's fair share for the parcels it owns, or no vote, uh, uh, or negative, which is not supporting enactment, uh, on city-owned parcels. Uh, and with that, that concludes the presentation. Uh, happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Um, we do have a member of the public that was waiting, so I'd like to go to our public in case they'd like to, have their comments and then if they needed to depart. So anybody from the public, this would be the opportunity and wish to raise your hand and, and make your comments known. We will, uh, city clerk, if you can bring in, I see we have two speakers.
Paul Wapinski?
I, I've got, um, a comment and two questions. My comment is, uh, I, I don't think the city manager should vote on behalf of, uh, the city unless the council tells him how to vote. He's not an elected official. I think you guys should, uh, tell him how to vote by a council vote. My two questions are, does the city get one vote or do they get 103 votes, one for each of the properties it owns? And my, uh, other question, uh, I forgot to ask this the last time that, uh, this came up, but, uh, if you're a non-sys and property owner, do you get to vote? Those are what I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your, uh, comments and questions. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Arus Harmon.
Hey, it's, uh, it's me and actually Plymouth is here as well and would like to speak in a moment. My understanding is that these rates haven't been adjusted up for, I mean, almost 20 years, I mean, since the nineties. Uh, and I know, uh, raising property owner fees is never a popular thing in our politics. So I really, I want to thank the, uh, city council for taking responsibility here. Like, this is a really important issue with climate change. Like, we all know storms are going to become more intense over time. You know, we get drought years and then flood years. So I've al- already submitted my ballot in favor and, uh, and I really appreciate the, the unanimity of the council in moving this issue forwards.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, next speaker?
Uh, so, so this is, this is Plymouth. Can I just speak directly after Arus, if that's okay?
Yes, please.
Okay. Great. Um, hi. So this is Plymouth Ansberg speaking. Um, uh, I live with Arus in the Bel Air neighborhood, which was relatively recently, since we moved here four years ago, um, assessed for flood risk and we were found to be a flood risk. My personal property is like one block outside of that. But, you know, the whole, the neighborhood as a whole is, is substantially in a, in a flooded area. So I think it's really important for us to maintain, um, our stormwater infrastructure to make sure that those floods are less severe if and when they happen. Um, there was a case just a few years ago where I know a neighborhood in San Jose that was, like, not expected to flood, had this, this, um, major flood when one of their, um, um, drainage systems, uh, you know, fa- failed, basically. Um, so I think it's really important to maintain our infrastructure and so I would encourage the council to, uh, vote in favor of putting our votes towards, um, raising these fees. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, I don't see any other, um, speakers, so we'll bring it to the council. There were some questions that were raised by the first speaker. What, one I, I'll take, just so you hear, for me and the council is, the reason this item is on the agenda is for the council to hear from the community, to have its comments deliberation, and then to direct the city manager on how to vote. So this will come from the city coun- council that will direct the manager how to vote. It does not give him or her or the city manager, uh, Rogan, the option on how to vote. It will be direct for this. City manager, there was two other questions that were raised.
Yes, sir. Direct, direct city manager requested, um, there was a question about do, uh, only natural persons, uh, are only natural persons allowed to vote? Uh, the answer is no, corporations, uh, school districts, public entities, religious institutions. It is the property owner of, of, of record and the representative and the authorized representative for that, uh, property owner. So whether it's an LLC, a corporation, et cetera. Uh, and it is true that the, uh, current storm water fee has not been increased in nearly, uh, 30 years. I, I believe the number is 27 years, uh, was the last time it was increased.
And I think the final question was, uh, out of the 103, is that one vote for each? Which the answer would be yes, and that would be then, uh, 103 votes.
Yes. Every, uh, uh, property owner, uh, receives a ballot for each parcel, uh, and so it's, uh, one vote, uh, for each parcel.
Thank you. Um, all right. Uh, council member Hamilton?
So, uh, no questions, but just a couple of comments. First, I want to thank, um, uh, staff for putting this under conduct of business and not under, not under consent because it's important that everything related to this, um, to this, uh, stormwater action be, be deliberated on as openly as possible. So I'm, I'm glad that we're, I'm glad that we're discussing it. The, um, it, it's really important to note that this process that we're following, including, um, the city being able to vote, to, you know, to vote on its own parcels, this is all part of the state-mandated process for how to handle these types of increases. You know, there were, there were, there were questions that came up, um, uh, earlier in the process regarding, you know, um, that vote to public records and all of those types of things. And I, I just want to make, make sure that the public understands that, that, that we're not making up this process as we go. That this is, that this is this, the, the state-mandated process for doing this, which includes the city being able to vote just as anyone else on every, on, on each parcel. And any, any individual, if one individual owned, you know, 10 parcels within San Bruno, that individual would get 10 votes in this process. It's the same. It would, it's all the same. So, um, and I just also wanted to reiterate, because it didn't, I don't think enough, enough, um, emphasis was put on this, on this fact that, you know, that, that while nobody is in favor of, that, you know, nobody is ecstatic about having to raise, uh, raise, um, this fee. This, right now, we're all paying a 1994 rate for our stormwater. And what else in your life are you able to pay the same price that you were paying in 1994 for this, for that service? It's just not, it's just not fis- fis- uh, fiscally sustainable, which is why we had to take this action. So I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Then council member, any other questions or comments from colleagues?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yes, um, this would be for our city attorneys to get absolutely clear. Everything that we're doing is in compliance with the law. That's the first question.
Well, certainly everything relating to this item is in compliance with the law. I think that's what you are asking.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you for that.
So yes, yeah, the, the, the answer is yes. Um, that's, that's correct. We wouldn't have brought it forward to you if it, if it hadn't been.
Right, right. So just to make that absolutely clear, um, and this is really part of the importance. And I'm, no more questions for you, city attorney. Here's my comment. The importance of this council bringing this item to the public, for the public to decide, that as, as we're all having some financial, uh, uncertainty during these times, the, the risk that we will put ourselves in as we proceed going forward, if this doesn't pass, we already, we're already seen it. We're, we're not, we don't have enough money coming in from the revenues to take care of the system that we need to protect our community. The rate of inflation from 1994 to today is 80%. A dollar in, in cost in 1994 is a dollar eighty. The cost of our stormwater has remained the same. The revenue that we're getting is the same. So, um, I am in support of this. We must be responsible and, and I encourage everybody, everybody to vote for it.
Any other questions or comments from colleagues? Okay. Uh, not seeing any other hands up, then, um, we've heard from the public. Uh, I, I won't repeat because of the hour. I will just, uh, concur and echo with, uh, Mr. Hamilton and, uh, Vice Mayor Medina. Um, with that said, there is a, it is a resolution. Is there any action by council?
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion. I'd like to adopt a, a resolution authorizing the city manager to vote yes on behalf of the city in the storm drainage and flood protection fee property owner mail ballot election.
I think, uh, Vice Mayor jumped in on that one. Okay. So, uh, Hamilton, Medina, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilperson Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, staff, for your presentation and, um, the items on consent and the conduct. Now we're going to move on to item number seven, comment from councilmembers. We have three items that, uh, for discussion. So, uh, what I, what I'm suggesting we do is go ahead and, uh, we'll start with Councilmember Mason, then we'll go on to Vice Mayor Medina. Read the topic. Allow that individual, council member or vice mayor to articulate, uh, what the topic is, what your thoughts are. Uh, maybe ask each of the colleague if they have a question, specific question on what was stated or needed some more clarity. And then, uh, everyone gets one opportunity, um, hereback, and then, um, we can go ahead and then give our comments and/or thoughts on that. Does that sound okay with everyone? Just so we keep the momentum going for the meeting? Okay. No, I just saw, I thought you were, uh, Councilmember Mason. Okay. So everybody seems okay with that. So I'm going to begin on, again, item seven, the seven A. Uh, Councilmember Mason. Consideration of moving San Bruno towards a rotate, rotating mayor model through the upcoming gubernatorial special election to align with the neighboring 19 peninsula cities. Councilmember Mason?
Great. Thank you. The question around a rotational mayor was one of the first questions I received when running for city council in 2019. Being the only city in the peninsula without a rotating mayor, I supported the switch then and would say so as I got, you know, more San Bruno residents. In April of 2020, after the creation of a process for council members to create incentives and initiatives, both council member Marty Medina and I agendized this item, but did not receive the majority support to move the initiative forward for the voters to make the decision. With the recent confirmation that there will be a recall vote on ballot, there's another possibility to provide the opportunity to make this change to the voters. In San Bruno, we have an elected mayor that holds a two-year term, needs to run every two years to hold the seat and does not have a limitation on how many terms our office can be held. The reasons behind this potential change are as follows. Number one is equity. Although largely a symbolic, uh, role, the mayor is and by title provided opportunities that other council members are not provided. Does it matter that San Bruno has not had a female mayor invited to any regional mayoral events? Mayor Lillis serves in over 20 years? Does it matter that when a woman did run for mayor, myself, she was asked by a fellow elected official why she ran without asking permission to run from the sitting mayor? For some, it may not matter, but for me, as an elected official who ran on the idea of change as the only female sitting council member, I think it does matter. By establishing a rotating mayor, we can ensure that those elected to office, and more importantly, those San Bruno residents we all represent are represented on a rotating basis reflecting our constituency. It also alleviates the need for anyone of lesser economic means to worry about funding a campaign every other year, which is in and of itself a daunting task unless the position continuously runs unopposed, um, as we have seen in San Bruno. Two, districting and surrounding cities. As we look to the potential of districting, an elected mayor for a single district would have a two-year term. That means that the district would have representation to the tune of 40% of every vote for a minimum of two years. A rotating mayor would offer a proportional opportunity for each district to have representation in the years ahead. This model already exists. We really are the only city in the peninsula without a rotating mayor. It's imperative that we offer our residents an opportunity to make this decision as our city continues to change and grow. We really do need proportional representation. Number four, potential revenue savings. Currently, the mayoral term is every two years and the city council term is every four years. What this means is that we have to have a mayor, a mayoral election every two years placed on the ballot. We had previously been informed that every additional item on the ballot is an additional cost, but these costs were not itemized. So it's important that we know, prior to making a final decision, what the cost is the city to have a separate election for the mayor versus city council election. We had also been informed that a special election is significantly expensive, something to the tune of $250,000 to $500,000. So this here is not a special election that San Bruno would be hosting. There is a recall election that's being placed before the voters and it's something that we can add to as opposed to having an election specifically to determine whether we would like to switch to rotational mayor or not. So what would be the cost to adding to this existing, uh, recall election, this item? And then two, um, what is the savings to the city by not having a mayoral item separate from the city council item on ballot every two years? And then five, a strategic initiative. At the time we had our initial strategic initiatives, a recall had not been confirmed. Um, since it is, and since this topic has been raised by our own residents, uh, the request at this time is that we really just understand the cost to place this item on the special election ballot, the timeline by which we need to make a decision. And once this is all understood, approved or not approved, then we either move forward with placing this item on the ballot or not. Lastly, it's important for me to note that this request is not a reflection of my opinion on our sitting mayor. It could be anyone sitting in the seat of mayor and this request would be the same. This is a policy decision that we should consider through the lens of policymakers, through the lens of city council members in one of 20 cities where this model appears to be working and for the benefit of our residents in San Bruno. With that said, we, we are free to have a discussion. I'm open to answering any questions. But the goal is, one, get the costs associated with placing this item on the recall ballot and then two, for staff to provide that information to council to make the determination whether to move forward. Thank you to my fellow council members for listening and for entertaining this topic.
Thank you, Councilmember Mason. Are there questions, uh, for Councilmember Mason? And what we'll do is we'll go through the colleagues here, then I'll open it up because we do have somebody from the public. So I want to make sure we have to give that opportunity to. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question, but I, I'm willing to provide a comment.
Well, let, let's go to questions and then so we also get it from the, uh, public and then we'll circle back as we had agreed we kind of would and then have our comments. Okay. Any other questions at this time? Okay. Um, I, I think the only, and I don't know, uh, my question might be, and I don't know, it, it's not fair to Councilmember Mason, but is there any estimate of, I'll give staff a moment as we go to the public, is to, what it could be? So I know that we, we had an estimate of $250,000 to $500,000 for if we were to do solely, let's say it was just us in the county. So is it still to that or do we know? Do we not know? And of course, the un- the unknown is probably, uh, our other community is going to be adding on to this election. Because obviously the more you have, the cheaper it is. Uh, the less you have, uh, then the, the city could, uh, bear all the cost. So with that, uh, I see no questions at this time. Let's, uh, uh, open it to members of the community. And we do have a hand up. City clerk?
Uh, yes, Arus Harmon?
Hello again, Arus Harmon, uh, from 633 Second Ave. Um, I don't have super strong feelings about this because we don't have a strong mayor system. We have a mayor that is sort of a first among equals, but, you know, there are some, uh, duties that are allocated to that. I think as it seems quite likely that we are going to migrate to I think as it seems quite likely that we are going to migrate to a districted or perhaps proportional system, given the California Voting Rights Act. I mean, I think there is something symbolically valuable in having the person that chairs the meetings who has that mayoral role elected by the city as a whole. And so I sort of feel like that the fact that we may be moving towards a situation where the council members are elected not by the entire city, rather than saying, oh, at any given time you'd rotate through them, that is instead an argument for keeping an at-large mayor. I think it is a little odd to have the, you know, only one district at a time holding that role. So I hope that will be considered. Did you want to? All right, that's all.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
The next speaker just raised their hand, Claudia Quinn.
Good evening, council. We would like to say that in regards to this issue, we would like to have it put on the ballot and let the voters decide what they think about it. So we're very much for finding out how the voters feel. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. If there's any other speakers, I could ask at this time to please raise your hand. I see one speaker to be called up and not seeing any other hands, so here's our last speaker on the top. Mr. Seymour, could you please bring him in?
Steven Seymour?
It's actually Sandra Perez Vargas. I want to check what Claudia said. It's, you know, a lot of things change, and maybe a rotating the mayor might be a good change, who knows? But like Claudia said, let the voters decide. I think it's important to let the residents decide on this one. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Oops, I muted myself. We're going to bring it back to city council. And with any comments from colleagues?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I've got Councilmember Hamilton and then Vice Mayor.
You can go first, it's fine. Okay, I knew you wanted to go, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just want to say I am supportive of exploring this and of putting the idea before the voters. My, I have questions about what the cost would be, the same questions that were that Councilmember Mason put as part of her statement about what the cost would be both for adding to the recall ballot and what the ongoing potential saves would be about not having a mayoral election. And I also have a lot of questions about how it would work in conjunction with district elections. The, that question, that second question, I think would be an easy one to answer considering that we have neighbors who also have district elections, and as is stated, we are the only city on the peninsula that has an elected mayor. So, you know, like ultimate supportive, it would be contingent on the answers to those questions. But I am in favor of moving forward to get those answers.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Councilwoman Mason mentioned, I expressed my support for this earlier. I believe a rotating mayor would be good for San Bruno. It isn't odd in San Bruno, or it's odd that we do have it, that there's one out of twenty cities, but San Bruno does its own thing. And this is something that the voters would get to decide. What we're figuring out is, at this point, for me, how much would it cost to do it in this election compared to how much would it cost to do it in the next election? For me, this isn't the highest priority. And however, without knowing the cost, which I think could be pretty simply obtained of contacting the county clerk to get some numbers so that we can make a decision. At this point, not knowing what that number is, I'm not going to be able to make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other Councilmember Salazar?
Just a few comments. I think I agree with a lot of the things I'm hearing across the board. You know, I don't have super strong feelings one way or the other about, you know, what is the best governance model? The one we have is work. I know that I've heard, you know, that the history of how we ended up here was because there was so much contention over selecting a mayor that it was finally decided, well, let the people pick directly, and so we are where we are. And as one of the speakers said, maybe enough time has gone by and opinions have changed. What's really interesting is that we are going to have to go through the districting process, and that could have implications on how this all plays together. Pacifica, for example, just two years ago, they decided when they picked their districts that they would now elect a mayor. So they're going in the other direction. They're going to be electing their mayor, starting with their next election as part of that process. So they have four districts and an elected mayor starting now, I believe with the next election. So, you know, I'm not sure if it makes more sense to go to the voters and make this decision prior to doing the districts, or would it make more sense to make this part of the districting discussion and then put it to the voters? Or do we want to decide our district issue first and then put this somewhere where we're not doing an off-year election and we get participation? Off-year elections tend to not get the same amount of participation, so maybe that would be the time to look at this. I mean, there's a lot of things that, you know, could potentially come back. I know a lot of people are interested in seeing fireworks voted on again. It's been a decade since that was decided by the voters, and maybe opinions have changed on that, and maybe we should be looking at those things as well. And so maybe we should allow enough time to look at all potential things that we would want to put out there and, you know, pretty much build out an entire ballot and put that on a ballot that hits, coincides with the with the general election and is more likely to get broad participation from our voters. So again, you know, not necessarily opposed to the idea, but I just wonder what the best way to approach it is. And if we tried to do this now, I don't think there's a date set for the election, but if it was going to be a November twenty twenty-one election, I don't think that would give us a big window this year to do a voter education and do the planning that we would have to do in order to get material available. And again, I don't think it would be fair to the voters to just kind of throw it out there and say, hey, what do you think? Without giving them some information on what the pros and cons and letting them understand the larger landscape of what's going to be happening with districts and so forth. So those would be my concerns.
Okay, for myself, so, and I didn't know about Pacifica, I do believe Hapoon Bay, they are district.
I'm sorry, you're correct. I meant Hapoon Bay, not Pacifica.
Okay, because I was going, okay. So Hapoon Bay, yeah, they are district and are going to elect a mayor. I know Burlingame is coming up with that question now. So they just had a meeting that is like, okay, we're being districting, how do we draw it, and then do we do an elected mayor? So they're doing it all together as one. And I think it's important for folks to know too, it absolutely automatically has to go to the vote of the people. It is up to them. It is not up to us. This is not simply where we have that option to do that. And the history, so one thing that I think being on the council that I have enjoyed is that when it came to the mayor and the vice mayor, there was never a question. It's not political. It's been, it's decided on the mayor, and it's decided on what the council agreed to, five oh, on how the vice mayor is selected. So as you know, there's times in our county that other cities have chosen by a three-two not to have somebody be the mayor or vice mayor or have that person serve twice in a row. And we've all read those, so we don't need to go into specific examples. And then I think that it doesn't become political at that time, and then it's clear direction based on what's, the voters have decided in the municipal code. And it is, it is true. How we got here is a person who should have been, could have been rotated into mayor, was not selected. And that's how it started, a voter initiative, because they said, hey, hold on. And so it went to the vote of the people. That gentleman who was bypassed for rotation became the first elected mayor. And in two years, he lost reelection. So that's the evolution of how it happened. Also, the reason for the every two years is because what the folks from the history I know is that they wanted three people up each two years, so majority of the council could be changed, and the direction of the city could change as well. Because then you'd have to wait four years for three members to come up. So that was their rationale back then as well for that. I don't know that there's an additional cost for the mayor being on every two years because you have two council members that are up. So unless somebody runs, then there's that, but you're always having that because you have two council members that are up each time. But I think it's also, I kind of share some of the sentiment of Councilmember Salazar is how do you know when the right time is to do this? I believe it would be costly in two nineteen than two twenty. I believe that the reason the state has mandated us to go into even years' elections was to get the largest voter turnout and have the best opportunity for democracy. And that's why even years has been done. I also, I believe we get the cost. It may be more than we think, I believe, but again, I don't truly know. I think I'd ask that question if staff does know of those costs. Let me pause there and see if there's any, any idea from staff.
Thank you, Mayor Medina. So staff does not know the cost to hold a city election tied to the gubernatorial recall election. The date for the recall election has not been set. They were looking at either late October or early November. Our city clerk has been in communication with other city clerks as well as the county. That date is currently not set. We hope to know that date sometime in June, which is if this item is supported tonight, we would hope to return to the city council by the second meeting in June, if we know that date. But that date is critical because that date tells us the date that we would have to submit our local item to the county. And once that date is known, we will be able to ask and get a firm or a close to a firm number from the county on what the cost will be. Our city clerk has also talked to her counterpart city clerk in the county, just to get a sense, are there any other cities that may be looking at a local measure tied to the gubernatorial recall? We have heard back from fourteen of the twenty cities with only two saying maybe. And so there are two more people potentially where we are sort of looking at the potential for a gubernatorial recall election or the certainty of gubernatorial recall election, but waiting on that date to decide whether they would have a local item on the ballot. And as we know from prior elections, the number of local items actually decreases the cost for each individual agency. And so all of that is really hopefully going to play out over the next month or so. And should this item be supported, we have been knowing the questions that the city council have asked, both with respect to elections, the cost of elections, as well as the district election process. And so we can bring back some information from the city council at that time.
What I was going to, thank you, what my final thing was, is I know it's about the district elections. You know, it's not to say we have to have five districts or four districts and an elected mayor. You could have seven districts. You don't know, because we haven't had that discussion yet. We haven't looked at the census. We haven't seen all of that data. And so therefore, you know, are we, you know, is it, does it make more sense to have it all done at once so it can be before the people? Or do you do it in sections when we don't know the other answer to the districting yet, because we obviously discussed that yet? Anyway, those are my comments, but like Vice Mayor Medina kind of said, there's the unknown, and I think for a lot of us, it's cost. If it's high, then I think, as we were in strategic initiatives last year, it was like, hey, you know, that's why Councilmember Mason pulled it off, and was like, hey, that's way too much. So not at this time. So anyway, those are my comments. I appreciate everybody with their comments. So Councilmember Mason has asked for us to come back with some of the oh, I think city manager kind of outlined it pretty good. And Vice Mayor Medina, did you, and Councilmember Hamilton, you were yes to bring it back with more data? Okay, and Vice Mayor Medina, are you okay to bring it back with additional data and information?
Yeah, we need, yes, Mr. Mayor, we need the cost, and until you ask, you don't know what it's going to be. And whenever they can give us a number, you know, ballpark would be helpful, and then we go from there.
Okay, Councilmember Salazar?
As long as this request for information isn't going to impact any other deliverables that we've assigned to staff, I mean, that's always a concern, right? I don't know how big of an ask this is, so as long as staff is okay with bringing this back within the timeframe, which is also, you know, makes it difficult, but as long as we're not derailing any other efforts, I'm in favor of bringing back the information.
I would concur with Councilmember Salazar as far as, you know, you've got a month and and as we bring on other tasks, I just want us to keep in mind, we're asking, we had initiatives, but we're asking first up. So I think all of us are, it's almost hard to make a decision because you don't know the facts of the decision. And I know for me, costs are going to count. And I'm sorry, I'm not trying to say, you know, but if you're talking two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something versus what it could cost going forward, but also I would like to have it quantified as far as what is the cost for having the mayor on every two years, because you already have council elections. So I would like just that because it's been raised, and I don't know how it could be more if, in essence, you already have an election. So what you would be doing is having, if everybody was rotated, you would only be having three people every four years, but you still would be having it, so you just would miss a seat every two. It may be a little bit of the history. I know you heard my version of what I've read, but it doesn't make me the historian either, so I think some of that would be helpful. So I think you have your direction from the council is to please ask the question, get the details, bring it back to the council, and you had said the second meeting in June, and I think we will wait for the report. Do you need any more clarification, City Mayor?
No, just no clarification. I do think it's important to know. As of late, there's been additional requests for the information that we would bring back. I am not sure that we will be able to do a detailed financial breakdown of the cost from past elections and how much of that was attributable to the mayor, mayoral election, as well as to bring back the full history on the city's mayoral processes. And so I do think that we can bring back high-level information that is necessary for the city council to understand the cost, know the date, know the time, know the deliverables, and can bring back some information on our district elections process and the timing on that, because we are currently working with the vendor and will be bringing forward a full schedule for that process. And so I do think that there's some valuable information that we can bring back. Whether we can decouple all of those costs and bring you a, what I call completed staffware analysis on costs and history, we will certainly look into that and of course, attempt to attempt to meet council's objectives.
I appreciate that clarification, and yeah, I wouldn't, you know, didn't expect the, the history lesson, so maybe I gave you that wrong impression. Okay, so staff, staff, I apologize. Council has given directions to staff, and I appreciate that. And I know Councilmember Mason has a second item as well.
Can I just really quickly, before we move on?
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure. I do think it's important when we look, when we look at the cost, I think that 2020 election was kind of an odd, I shouldn't say an odd election, but turnout was significantly greater than I think in, in past years is what I've seen in the numbers. So I do think it's important to see maybe the last two elections, what the cost is for having these items on the ballot. So if we could just have that, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go on to the next item for Councilmember Mason. Direct the HART committee to draft a resolution for city council approval affirming the city's commitment to stand in solidarity with the black community and condemn racism.
Thank you. Mayor Medina, this is another item that was originally proposed last year. In lieu of consensus on this item, the council created the HART committee. Since the creation of the HART committee, we have yet to review this original request. We have, in a very short time period, provided a resolution to stand in solidarity with the AAPI community, which I think we're all proud of. And at this time, one year later, on the anniversary of George Floyd's death, it's really important that we provide the same solidarity to the black community and condemn racism. Chair Salazar requested direction from the council recently for a charge to the HART committee. As the vice chair, I am now requesting that the council provide the HART committee the direction to move forward with this resolution and bring it back for council approval at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions by colleagues, questions? And if anybody in the community has any, they can raise their hand. If not, comments from, from council. I, I don't mind starting, or I'm sorry. Is that all right? Okay.
You gotta go over, right?
I know, I'm going, I just thought I'll go first.
Gotta follow the rules, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, that, you are, you know what, Ashley, I did state that at the beginning, so let's, let's not off track, but let's stick to the plan. But Councilmember Hamilton?
I am, I am absolutely supportive of this. The, the, the HART committee was, was formed out of this question, and the, and this request, and this request never, was, was, was never addressed. And this is, this seems like a fairly easy thing for us to, to remedy, and something that we, that we need to remedy. I am absolutely supportive of this.
Thank you. There, Mr. Salazar, any?
No, I, I don't have any.
Question. Got it. And, oh, I said, that's right, we're, we're on comments, because there were no questions. I apologize. We're, we're moving faster than I, than I realized. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I fully support this, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
And for myself, I'm, I'm fine with it as well. What I would ask, and I know this is not the intent of the council member, but when it says direct HART committee, I'd like it to be more of a, kind of an encouragement, because I'd like it organic, right, to come from, from HART committee. When we decided the purpose of it, there were four bullet points for the purpose which we all saw and we concurred to. One was to seek community input and the perception of racial and social equity within San Bruno. To build trust and strengthen partnerships among local community-based organization, public agencies, neighborhood groups, and religious organizations to explore and evaluate successful models and best practices for racial and social equity. Two more bullets. Develop and support the implementation of events to enhance the San Bruno Stands United Against Hate campaign. And finally, submit recommendations for action to the San Bruno City Council designated to reduce or eliminate racial and social inequities, and help the city of San Bruno better serve its diverse community. I'd like to remind that this was the purpose of why it was formed, and this is what its purpose was. And so I think, again, it was to come from this group sitting, knowing, and it holds two members of the city council, two representatives from San Bruno Park School District, two representatives from Cappuccino Hunt, two representatives from the business community, and two members from the general community. So I would like to see that we go to what we had decided. I, I think what I do hear from folks at times is, okay, a resolution comes, we all feel, we could probably, if it was on the agenda, we could vote on it right now, we'd be done. But at the same time, then what's the next step? It's been a year, as Councilmember Mason said, so what has transpired here? Because pieces of paper that get filed in the archives are not moving the ball forward in order to address what I think the purpose also is. So I'd like the committee, the HART committee, when they get back, is to kind of go back to its original purpose too, and maybe explore some of those other items that were, as we all concurred to what, what its purpose was. So I think HART committee has their direction from council is bring them together. Oh, and Councilmember Mason, did you have any other items other than the ones listed? Just from comments from yourself?
Yeah, just some quick updates, just that I'm really, I just hope staff looks into state and federal assistance for individuals who are behind on their utility bills. The numbers are quite high, and there's a number of services right now available. And hopefully, we can prominently display those on our city website, through our social media outlets. It, it helps us, we get paid back, and it really helps the residents to ensure that they have, that their needs are being met. I also received a mailer from California Treasurer Fiona Ma, and wanted to encourage individuals to open college savings opportunity accounts, or also known as 529s. Apparently, and I apologize, but I have it right in front of me, they're 100% tax-free growth towards the children's college education, but what I wanted to make sure I said right was that between May 24th and May 31st, there's a $50 incentive for opening. So this is a mailer that I think we all got, but I wanted to share that. And then the last thing is that a lot of individuals may not know that the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development has recently allotted a significant amount of emergency housing vouchers to cities across the country and counties across the country. And San Mateo received 217 of these emergency housing vouchers. So I am hoping that we are somehow working, I'm not the contact for Life Moves, I'm not sure if the city is still meeting with them on a regular basis, but these have to be allotted very quickly, they have to be used quickly. And if Life Moves can connect some of our homeless residents in San Bruno to these emergency housing vouchers, we would stabilize their housing situations. And I think it's a, it's a pretty unique opportunity, given where we are right now with COVID-19 and with the opportunity. So I just want to really encourage staff to connect with the county and the, the housing authority of San Mateo to determine whether any of our homeless participants are eligible or on the referral basis to receive any of these emergency housing vouchers. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to item B under comments from council members. Vice Mayor Marty Medina, request to agendize a study session to discuss the creation of the downtown improvement ad hoc committee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. So yes, a few weeks ago, I first mentioned the formation of a downtown improvement committee, and I'm following the process that, that we have of trying to agendize this topic. And why I wanted to have a study session about it is because I think it's important enough to hear from all of the council. I enjoyed working with Councilman Hamilton on the Clean San Bruno Subcommittee, and I believe we succeeded in bringing our recommendation to the council. So why have a downtown improvement committee? Well, our council has been hearing from the public for, for years about what can we do to improve our downtown? And this council and, and, and the, this council and the previous council, in the previous couple of years, have done a lot with, with staff, you know, providing the work of, of generating a downtown parking plan, downtown management parking plan in 2019, a street skate plan in 2019, updated the parking standards in, in 2020. So recently, in this, this year, we already, with tonight, approved for funding for, for activating Centennial Plaza. We're pursuing a grant for improving Poe Park. And council, at the last council meeting, approved the replacement of garbage cans. City crews this past week completed the, the parking improvements with the addition of green and white loading zones and parking zones to help move, move people safely to get into certain areas and to kind of encourage people to, to get their purchases completed and, and open up a spot for somebody else. So all, all along this, we know, I know, council is extremely busy. We know that our budget is tight, and we're entering another budget cycle. So yet, still, what more can we, what more can the council do to improve downtown? How do we address vacant storefronts? And how can we make those vacant storefronts look much better than they do now? I had the opportunity to walk with the mayor today, and a couple of those vacant storefronts are in the same condition for years. So this, this ad hoc committee would, would, would do some of the research in, in looking at what other cities are doing to improve the appearance of these vacant storefronts through their municipal code. Other questions? What can we do to help them in attracting businesses? How do we improve the partnership with the Chamber of Commerce? How can we improve the communication and, and build relationships with our existing business? We need to build the trust. We need, we need to get the confidence that we are there to support them. What events can we have downtown? Can we have a car show? Can we have a festival? Can we have musical and art events? Where, where will the clean sweep, a neighborhood sale, I don't think it was called a garage sale, but that we had in the park, was the clean sweep sale maybe? But.
Flea market.
What was it?
It was the flea market.
The flea market, okay. Didn't really want to call downtown a flea market, but, okay. So what, so what can we do? Can we do something like that? Can we do it in a parking lot? What, what does this council think that they can do? Even, even though staff's really busy, what can we do to encourage art, to work with the Culture and Arts Commission, and, and let's get some art? As we activate the Centennial Park, that artwork likely is going to go away. And, and it's encouraging to know that we're going to do something about it and make it livelier there. So this downtown improvement committee will, will, will review these questions and provide some recommendations to council to move it a little more forward. I spoke with a San Bruno committee member here, and I, I won't try to pronounce his last name, but John, who has nuts for candy down in Burlingame, who has experience, vast experience with, with, with working and, and building a downtown. And business improvement district was, was something that we briefly touched on, but that, for me, is way down the road as we continue building upon the trust that we have in our community, in our business owners, to get the investors to, to take a bigger chance in San Bruno. So I'm asking my colleagues to agendize a study session so we can have these conversations in public. Thank you.
Okay, I just want, I'm, I am going out of turn, but just for clarity, because it says study session, and then it says an ad hoc committee. So what I think, correct me, please, the ask is to have the full council in a study session in regards to downtown. Okay, just want to make sure, that would be the first step?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Just want to make sure, since it said vote. Okay, questions of Vice Mayor on what he has brought before us? Councilmember Hamilton?
So, so then my question would be, because I, I have, I have questions about what, specifically the remit of this committee be, but it sounds like those questions would be brought up and discussed in the study session that you're asking for. Is that what, is that, is that fair, Mr. Vice Mayor?
That would be fair. I brought up a number of the questions here and, and this, these comments that we could look into, but perhaps maybe the, the council doesn't want to look into that and, and wants to limit it specifically to something else. I, I want to be really focused, I want to actually get something done here. I think we have a lot of great momentum going forward in our downtown, and I want to build upon that, and I know staff's really busy. And I understand that eventually, whatever we're going to give them is going to take their time, but we have to be strategic and, and helpful in whatever we can do. I didn't mention, I, I, I forgot that to get people downtown is to, to have some additional events with, with either, I know the chamber did some wine events, and there was some great enthusiasm for that, of course, but then COVID hit, and it just put everything like to a screeching halt in the whole world. So it, I look forward to it, I think it's, it's really a promising time that, that we can continue building on, on, on improving our downtown.
Okay. Other questions from colleagues? Questions, not, Councilmember Salazar?
And so my question would be just, if, if we're talking study sessions specifically, and, and Vice Mayor, I, I like the enthusiasm that, that's coming around, you know, the effort and the ideas that you're throwing out there, I think there's, there's a lot of potential there. So I'm really thinking that, you know, having a, a working subcommittee could be a real asset and, and something that could help build the momentum. But just in terms of scheduling a study session, so study sessions have historically been staff reports on topics of, of, you know, that require a lot of information. And so if we're talking a study session, I mean, it almost sounds like we're talking more brainstorming than study session, where there would, wouldn't be a staff report, staff's not going to bring anything back for us to review and understand and learn and all that. So maybe, just a suggestion, maybe we can just bring this back as an agendized discussion for the council to, to prioritize some items and then take the action to create the, the subcommittee from there. Because I don't think we really need a lot of prepared stuff. It just, let, let's agendize a brainstorming session as part of one of our regular meetings or as a special meeting.
That, absolutely fine with that. For lack of coming up with a better term, the, the thing that we're used to, either having a study session on something from the council or, or having, what, what else do we call it, right? So, but having that open discussion where it's agendized, so we can freely talk about and we can share with our community of, of what our vision is and how we could, as a council, and I think we're, we're, we're already proven that we're, we're working together to get stuff done. So yes, we can call it a brainstorming session, that's fine too.
Okay. So you know, other hands up, my question would be, and I know it's new, but you know, even when we, you used to have the farmer's market, right? And so that, that was done, and now, in retrospect, with Sunday, not a, a good day to do that, is a Saturday, but then there's the competition. So I, I think, you know, for this brainstorming, I think is probably best, because what I, what I would think, and I'm going to clarify, because what Councilmember Salazar said, is that staff wouldn't need to prepare, they wouldn't need to organize. They, I can also see on the other side of it going, oh my gosh.
Right, right.
Blind campus, and everybody take a brush and start painting. And God knows where we're going to end up. And then the, the, would be, what can we do? And I think what I heard from you, which I liked, was, hey, let, let's narrow the scope, let's, let's accomplish some things and not put 40 things on downtown, because we know it won't happen. We just know. But what can we do? And maybe the council, because it may take finances, you know, where's the money coming from? Or maybe as, the chamber is the one who led the charge of the farmer's market, was at the mall before, you, we talked about the wine tasting, you're correct, and there was... the mall before, you, we talked about the wine tasting, you're correct, and there was the Bay Hill Champagne that used to be on San Bruno Avenue for years, and that was Cars, Eric Costa organized that because of the Cars and what have you, and so that added some activity. I think the other objective is, it's about improvement, but I think improvement, if I'm hearing you correct, too, is activities to bring folks down. I know we talked and briefly, you know, we've got the Fourth of July Pee Wee Tournament. Do we quit, but do we have that opportunity to bring those folks from outside of town to come down to have a meal or do whatever they need to do? So take those opportunities as well. So, but I think I've heard that. And Councilmember Mason, has your head up?
Yeah, sorry, I was looking for the new, the priority initiatives that we had. So what if we narrowed down to what we have on the initiatives? So for example, you know, there's Clean San Bruno, how does that, what does that look like in our downtown, right? We have the small attraction program, what would that, what would that mean for the downtown businesses? We have the summer Saturdays or Sundays for street closures, could that be a car show? Could that be the, you know, the tree lighting? Could that be, I don't know what day the tree lighting would fall on this year? But those are three I'm looking at right now. And so I wonder if we can maybe further define what we have, and then we can make them achievable for this year. And I would support that initiative so that we're not, we're not going outside of the bounds, and maybe hopefully just assisting staff a little bit by narrowing down the instruction. So I don't know if that helps, but I was just thinking that as I looked at our strategic initiatives for this year.
Okay, thank you. And don't think, I knew that just went up, but City Manager, I certainly was not going to leave you off the list, we want to include you for your thoughts and comments.
Sure, thank you, Mayor Medina. Just a few offhand comments. Certainly, should the city council desire to have a study session to talk about downtown, we can agendize that. I think the first thing that comes to mind is, while, of course, there's a desire both on staff and on council to take a dedicated focus and look at areas where we can make improvements downtown, those that have already been directed to staff or other, it's important to note that in June, council will be really busy with everything related to budget. And so we're even in looking at the conversations that we know you will have around budget that we don't typically have, like ARA funding and CityNet, we might be looking for additional special meetings in June. And so sort of looking at what's before you as well as regular business, I really don't see your ability to have this study session in June, and so we're probably talking July. And then I think there are other initiatives that are really getting ready to kick off that I want to make sure that both staff and council have enough time to talk about and move forward. And while I totally understand the sentiment of let's agendize a brainstorming session and no work needs to be done with staff, I've been doing this long enough to know that tons of staff prep is needed every time the city council gets together to talk about a conversation, because there will be questions about, well, maybe the subcommittee can do this, but what do we do, what do we do about that now? Right? And how does staff interface with the chamber? And what would it take to have a municipal code change to address X? There's going to need to be some coalescing of staff that support a number of the things that Councilmember Medina mentioned. In addition, I think it's important to point out that the city council has already developed and adopted a set strategic initiative for the city council to work on, many of which relate to downtown. And a little bit of what I hear is, well, maybe council can take on some of those. But without, looking at the list, with all of those that you directed to staff, really require staff time and staff input to really work on and bring before you. And so if the direction of the committee is to look at sort of how to do those faster or prioritize them, I think there's a little staff analysis that's going to be needed, because what we said when you adopted your strategic initiatives is, one, we were going to see how many we could afford to fund that require funding in the proposed budget that you're going to get and act on for next fiscal year. And then we would also return to you with a schedule, because all of those initiatives that you adopted, staff doesn't have time to work on immediately, and some of them, as we mentioned, won't even begin for six months. And so I think it's important that we be allowed to do that work, so there's not a sort of front-loading of something that you've already directed staff, and now we then need to readjust the things that you've already addressed staff to. So in summary, if council directs it, absolutely, we will support it. The recommendation is to look to have it sometime in July, and certainly, staff will do a little preparation based on the items that have been mentioned. Tonight, just so we're prepared and the right people are there, and we've had some initial conversations around the work that's already planned and already ongoing related to downtown.
I'm going to unmute myself. Thank you, City Manager, because I think that's important, and I think, you know, we need to be realistic, we need to understand time, staff's time and timeline, because obviously, the budget is a priority in June with some of the other council objectives that we have, and staff needs to keep us on track with getting that done. So what I've heard from council is that, yes, on a study session, City Manager has told us, you know, realistically, July would probably be the earliest after the budget's been approved, and that's behind department heads. I've also heard from council is that, let's, like Councilmember Mason said, hey, there's some items already there, and maybe they're already in the pipeline, and they're already scheduled out, and, but let's be realistic with what we're trying to achieve and look at potential things to add, a good environment that maybe brings folks to the downtown as well as do what we can with staff, staff situation. Do they grasp that okay, folks? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm fine with it, with big study session happening in July. The appointment of the members of the subcommittee, my intent would be hoping that, it's quite different when you talk to somebody saying that you're on the subcommittee than you're just the one council member, and that you are proceeding with, with trying to accomplish these things, right? Perhaps this is a city attorney question, do we have to wait to have this session to appoint the committee members, or could we appoint them now?
City Attorney?
Yes, thank you. You cannot appoint committee members now unless that was specifically agendized, there's a relatively recent case that says that, so you'd have to...
That's fine. Okay. Da da da.
Okay, appreciate the clarity, City Attorney. Vice Mayor Medina, anything, any other comments for this evening?
I do have one, one last comment announcement. Thursday at Bel Air School, the second harvest food distribution, people have been lining up before 2:00, and the line gets pretty long. We generally get through close to 200 vehicles, or 180 vehicles and 20 walk-ups. So Thursday, Bel Air, it starts at 2:00.
Thank you.
If you need to, you show up, you can register right around the spot.
Other...
Thank you. Other comments from my colleagues? First, Councilmember Salazar, then we'll go to Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I know we mentioned this at the beginning, but I think it's important enough to reiterate, COVID-19 vaccines are available and they're important. I got mine, I'm fully vaccinated, as of last Thursday, so I also wanted to make a plug, our partners over at Cappuccino High School wanted to get the word out that they're hosting their clinic on Wednesday, June 2nd. So they have the Pfizer vaccine, they're doing kids 12 years and up, adults as well, and for people that are already fully vaccinated, they also need volunteers for that day to help with the process. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that. Councilmember Hamilton?
Okay, I just, I have one item quickly. Earlier this year, Councilmember Salazar and I held a virtual town hall for residents. It was very well attended, and in my opinion, was a really good opportunity for residents to engage with council in a more direct way to discuss city issues and raise questions. I'm hopeful that you, my colleagues, can commit to teaming up to hold additional town halls on a regular and ongoing basis, perhaps quarterly, which would mean the next one would start getting scheduled sometime soon. I would suggest that we rotate members and commit to at least try, to at least try to go through all the available pairings of us before we repeat any pairings. I know we can't discuss this because this was not agendized, but I wanted to plant the seed with you, with my colleagues tonight. I intend to request this to be agendized for council comments, so we can discuss it in our next meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton. Thank you, Councilmember Salazar, on the vaccine at Cappuccino. It's June 2nd, and the second one would be on June 23rd, and yes, they are looking for help at City Bulls and et cetera, but thank you for bringing that up. For myself, I wanted to say we had a, well, we call it now an all-hands meeting agenda, and this is for the county, believe it or not, it's been a year serving on that, and this is where, you know, we get the vaccination updates, emergency rental assistance, workforce recovery, small business recovery, education and digital equity and childcare. These are subsets of these bodies that a lot of us were asked to join, and then we have now in all hands. And I won't ramble all the numbers, but looking at the presentation on what the county slash municipality towns have done and the outreach that has been had in all kinds of areas has been rather impressive, and is a testament to, you know, what we've been doing thus far, and the nonprofits that have been helped, the meals that have been provided, et cetera. So it was encouraging, because I think for the first time in the year, or the more of the year we've been meeting, it's, everybody's feeling a little more optimistic, and everybody's feeling a little more hopeful, and everybody's seeing a light somewhere. But as was mentioned, June 15th is still not here, and we need to keep on the right track, do the right thing in order to ensure that we keep moving forward and don't take a pause and move backward. Also, I want to, and I've just got to say, show that we're getting some normalcy back, is that I want to wish the class of 2021 at Cappuccino High School, this Thursday, will be having an in-person graduation with precautions and modifications. Last year, obviously, was virtual, so I'm sure the class, though, have not been to class, to be together and have that experience, I think, is something we could happy for and know that, again, we're moving in the right direction. So have the graduation to them. With that said, I will go ahead, and then we will adjourn this meeting this evening to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on June 8, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Everybody, enjoy the rest of your week. Be safe.